Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this June 6, 2022, meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Thank you for being here with us tonight and in person and online if you're watching. We have a special treat for our pledge of allegiance we have with us tonight from the Bloomington Police Department, the color guard. So if you would all please rise for the presentation of the colors. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you to the Bloomington Color Guard for presenting the colors this evening. It's always great to see them here. It always adds something special to our meetings, and they are here with us this evening because I imagine why you, many of you are here with us this evening, where you're swearing in new officers this evening. So very excited about that. We will get to that in just a moment here. Once again, thanks for being here with us, and as we get into our agenda, the first thing we have on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. As I mentioned, we do have swearing in of our new officers. We're going to meet some new employees, and we have a proclamation for Pride Month. We have a number of items on our consent business. Councilmember Martin has that. We have one public hearing. Item 4.1 is a public hearing regarding code amendment for the multifamily parking standards. Under organizational business, we have earned sick and safe leave ordinance we're going to be discussing, the 2022 cultural arts support grants, funding recommendations, and of course, our city council policy and issue update. And Mr. Verbrugge, we do have one walk-on item, item 3.19, under consent. Can you fill us in on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. You'll see on the agenda, item 3.19 is a Second Amendment to a closing agreement for the acquisition of property at 1750 West 96th Street. This is the property the city is acquiring for the future fleet maintenance garage. We had closing scheduled due to some issues on the seller's part. We've agreed to reschedule that date. The seller is also agreeing to provide the city some additional amount for legal fees. So this is preauthorization of the Second Amendment when we get the language crafted. No other terms of the deal are going to, to my understanding, be amended. For the most part, it's just an authorization to extend the closing date and then to provide the city those legal fees.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Counsel, any questions on that? Any questions or additions regarding tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would move tonight's agenda with the addition of item 3.19 under the consent business.
Second.
And a motion and a second to accept tonight's agenda as amended and stated. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda for this evening. Thank you very much. Item two, under our introductory items, is item 2.1, the swearing in of our new police officers. And I'd like to call up, I don't see him here, and there he is. Is the police chief? Yes, he is. There he is. He was, you're hiding back there. Chief of Police Booker T. Hodges to introduce this, and then we'll get the swearing in. So good evening, Chief, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So I'll bring up the city clerk to do the official swearing in of the officers here. Then they'll each come up and introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about themselves. We are excited to have them here, but I'll save those remarks for after their swearing in.
Very good.
Thank you.
City Clerk, Ms. Christina Scipione. And I'll make the announcement that I always make to family members during the swearing in. This is a big occasion, and if you want to take pictures, do not be shy. So come on up, get to your best spot to take a picture, and make sure you get the picture that you need. So as I said, you're not going to get in folks' way. Do not be shy. Ms. Scipione.
Please raise your right hand. Please state your first and last name.
Hi, Jeff Gutierrez.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the state of Minnesota
and the state of Minnesota.
and will faithfully discharge the duties
and will faithfully discharge the duties.
as a police officer for the city of Bloomington, Minnesota
as a police officer for the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
to the best of my judgment and ability.
to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Chief Hodges.
Okay, Mayor and council members. So first, we're going to bring up Officer Good. If you want to come up here and tell us a little bit about yourself, and you can address the mayor and the city council. Thanks.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Charlie Good. I grew up in Grand Marie, Minnesota. I received an associate's degree in law enforcement from Rasmussen University, and I worked full-time for the Minnesota National Guard before coming here. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
Officers, I'm going to ask you all to take five steps to the left. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Michael Earhart. I grew up in Burnsville. I have an associate's degree from Rasmussen University. Prior to working for Bloomington, I worked for the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office for seven years.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. Good evening, city manager. My name is Tristan Mulville. I grew up in Pirate Lake Savage area. I received a bachelor's degree from Minnesota State University, and I worked at Mystic Lake Casino prior to this. Thank you, guys.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Ryan Stevens. I grew up in Richfield, South Minneapolis. I got an associate's degree at Normandale Community College, and prior to this, I worked for the Ramsey County Sheriff's Department for five years. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Jeff Gutierrez. I grew up down in Farmington, Minnesota, and I received an associate's in law enforcement from Normandale. And before coming to BPD, I was working with Target Security.
Welcome aboard, and I hope your leg is better soon, Officer Gutierrez.
Mayor, city council, city manager, good evening. My name is Benjamin Schleis. I grew up in Eden Prairie, Minnesota. I received three bachelor's degrees in sociology, psychology, and criminal justice from the University of St. Thomas, and before that, I worked active duty in the Marine Corps. Good evening.
Welcome.
Mayor, city council, city manager, I'll keep my remarks brief to your family members. You're, they're getting to join one of the best law enforcement organizations, I believe, in the country. And at the Bloomington Police Department, right now, our core value is respect. We're going to do a process with the community where we develop a different set of core values, but as it stands today, our core value is respect. And we believe that if you treat people with respect, you can have good outcomes. As chief of this department, I'm going to do everything I can to provide your loved ones with a safe environment. We're going to do everything we can to provide them with the resources to make sure that they can come home to you safely every single night. The Bloomington Police Department, we jokingly say, is a family. That doesn't mean necessarily you like everybody in your family, but we will respect everybody that comes here, and I have high expectations of them. This community has high expectations of them. Bloomington is a tight-knit, small, big community, if that makes sense. If you've been in Bloomington any amount of time, you fully understand that, and we do expect them to be respectful, and that is non-negotiable, and they wouldn't be here if they weren't. So right now, we do believe that there is probable cause, that they are people of character. And I know Ryan's heard this before because I hired him in Ramsey County, but by the end of your probation, you need to be, be able to be convicted of being a person of character. And I do believe that each one of these folks does have that. So with that, welcome to the Bloomington Police Department, and I know there'll be a reception. And lastly, I'd be remiss, we got Deputy Chief Kim Clausen over here, and Sergeant over here who has been responsible, Tom, for the vast majority of their training, and our honor guard who comes out to these, and then also, and then lastly, Nancy Steele, who's our HR generalist, and without her, none of you guys would have paperwork to start. So with that, Mayor, city council, city manager, that concludes my remarks.
Well, thank you, Chief, and welcome to all of you. Very glad to have you onboard, very excited to have you onboard with what I consider, as the chief said, to be the best police department in the state of Minnesota. Members of the family, thank you. Thanks for, thanks for letting us have them for a while and put them to good use, and they're looking forward to having them onboard and having you all become part of the Bloomington Police Family. So welcome all. And it is generally our tradition now, we each get a chance to congratulate and say hello to you, so come on, you got to come on through. And now I know you'd all love to sit through the rest of this council meeting, but if you want to get to the reception, I certainly understand. So if you want to do that now, that'd be fine.
I'm recording it at home.
Good enough. Item 2.2 on our agenda is the introduction of new employees, and we've got, I think I count four new employees this evening, and Diane Kirby is going to kick us off, going to be introducing, I believe, our newest member of our coed team.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and city council. I am delighted to introduce you to our new community outreach and engagement manager, Laura Bowen. Laura started working for the city just a few weeks ago on May 16th. She came to us from the University of Minnesota Extension Center for Family Development, where she was an extension educator. Previously, she worked also at Project for Pride and Living as an AmeriCorps volunteer coordinator. She holds a master's degree in public health from the University of Minnesota and a bachelor's in anthropology and environmental policy from Lawrence University. When I spoke to Laura's references prior to coming here, they spoke very, very highly of her and told me that she was a strategic thinker, a coach, a mentor, and a champion of people who cannot speak out. Laura and her husband and two children, and I think it's two cats, two dogs, right? They all live together in St. Paul, but Laura and her husband are currently seeking housing, a new house, and they're looking in the Bloomington area. So if you have any tips, it's a tough housing market, she has told me. If you have any suggestions, I know she would love to hear those. So please welcome our new community outreach and engagement manager, Laura Bowen.
Good evening, Laura.
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager. I'm thrilled to be here at the city of Bloomington and doing outreach and engagement work. It's really my passion and my heart, and I'm just thrilled to be working for a city organization that cares so deeply about equity and engagement. I see the two as inextricably intertwined, and I'm looking forward to doing my part in supporting the coed team as we do engagement so that folks in the city feel like they can authentically engage with the city as their full selves, and we can be of service to the community.
Wonderful, thank you. And I'm sure they've shared with you that we keep the coed team busy, and with our new strategic plan, the engagement team is going to be even busier, so we're very glad to have you onboard.
We are small but mighty, and we look forward to it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Next up, I think we have three new employees from Bloomington Ice Garden, and I see Lenny Klaimenschmitz working his way forward. Good evening, Lenny, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Yes, I get the honor of introducing three new staff tonight from the Bloomington Ice Garden. First, I've got Ray Har, the fourth. He joined our team back in February. This was a new maintenance worker position that the council approved for the 2022 year. Ray comes to us from the city of Richfield, where he spent five years working for the Parks and Recreation Department, and three of which were working at the Richfield Ice Arena. So I'll let Ray introduce himself a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. It's really been an honor to get a full-time position with you guys here in the city of Bloomington. I'm excited to learn more and possibly help others move up in the Parks and Rec to have other, to let others have, you know, fun in our parks and keep them in a good quality for others to enjoy. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, and welcome.
Secondly, I've got William, aka Billy Lewis. He's our new assistant manager at BIG. Even though he's the new assistant manager, he's been with us for a while, so Billy worked with the Bloomington Ice Garden for about a year and a half, two years, before being promoted in April to the assistant manager role. Billy also comes before joining the city of Bloomington and Bloomington Ice Garden. He worked with the city of Edina and the Minneapolis Park Board. When he was with Minneapolis, he worked in their golf courses and ice arenas in leadership roles there, and we're super fortunate and excited to have him on our team here.
Good evening.
Good evening, guys, Mayor, city council. Super privileged to be working for the city of Bloomington. Year and a half I've been here, it's been great. Everybody welcomed me, welcomed me with open arms, braced me, had some training that was great to get to know everybody from different departments, and yeah, I'm looking forward to BIG being as good as it can be. Customer service is a huge part of me, and that's what we do. So thanks for the opportunity, I really appreciate it.
Glad to have you onboard.
And last, but not least, we have Stephen Wood, who is also joining us as a maintenance worker. And so when Billy got promoted, that position became vacant, and through the interview process, we selected Stephen. He started with us full-time last week. He's got almost, you know, about a full week now under the belt, and he keeps coming back. But Stephen had been working with us part-time since January as a Zamboni driver at the Bloomington Ice Garden, so this was a promotional opportunity from within, from part-time to full-time. So kind of three different staff with three different opportunities here. Stephen also is a part-time firefighter with the city of Savage, and previously spent his career working in the print industry, where he provided high-quality customer service to internal and external customers for many, many years. So despite the role of maintenance worker, that role is so much more than that at the Bloomington Ice Garden. The staff do cleaning and open and close and provide customer service and provide that full-time presence when maybe management isn't always there. So we're very appreciative to have them there, and let Stephen introduce himself a little bit.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, what Lenny said, my background's in print. I went to St. Thomas for journalism, so I just found myself in print. Started at the Savage Fire Department and really just kind of liked getting out from behind the desk and working hard, working with the community. I kind of grew up around the rink, so Bloomington Ice Garden's, you know, a great place for me. Very happy to get the full-time job and very thankful. Management and the employees have been all very welcoming and great, and, you know, everyone in the community, you know, whether you're, you know, learning how to skate or you're in an adult league, it's really fun working with everyone, so thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Lenny, thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that you're able to poach now from Edina and Richfield and Minneapolis and even the Savage Fire Department. Well done. There must be something good going on at Bloomington Ice Garden if you're bringing all these folks in, so.
Everybody wants to be with Bloomington.
Everybody wants to be with Bloomington. Well, gentlemen, welcome. Thanks for being with us, thanks for your service, and I look forward to, to your many years of service at Bloomington Ice Garden, and I appreciate the comments about customer service because you're absolutely right. That's where it starts, and that's where it ends with, with something like the Ice Garden and all that we do in our park and rec system. So thank you, well done. Good to see you. Item three on our agenda is, or excuse me, item 2.3 on our agenda is a Pride Month proclamation, and I will be reading our Pride Month proclamation from the podium. Well, LGBTQI Pride Month is celebrated every year during the month of June across the country and here in Bloomington as well. The Human Rights Commission submitted this proclamation to recognize Pride Month, and Logan Sauer is going to accept it, so come on up here while I read the proclamation, and we'll turn it over to you. Good to see you again. You can come around this side. Thanks for being here tonight. Proclamation for Pride Month, June 1st through June 30th, 2022. Whereas the month of June 2022 is designated Pride Month and recognizes the discrimination and violence individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, LGBTQIA, are commonly subjected to and raises up and promotes self-affirmation, dignity, equal rights, and increases the visibility of the LGBTQIA community. And whereas, our city is committed to being inclusive and welcoming of all individuals along the natural spectrum of human identity and sexual orientation, and recognizes that we are a diverse community, enriched by this diversity, including the contributions the LGBTQIA community has made and continues to make. And whereas, the LGBTQIA rights movement continues to this day, and while there has been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQIA community in the United States and around the world still face an unacceptable level of discrimination and violence, so that we must remain vigilant and push back against those who seek to roll back our progress. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tim Bussi, Mayor of the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as LGBTQIA Pride Month and call upon the people of Bloomington to turn back discrimination and prejudice everywhere it exists. Sign the sixth day of June 2022. And I do want to say that in recognition of Pride Month, the progressive pride flags will be flown here at Civic Plaza and over at the Public Works Building for this week, June 3rd through the 10th. We also are sponsoring the Come As You Are art exhibit in the Inez Greenberg Gallery. We had a fantastic opening on Friday night, but we had 300 people here. It was a wonderful celebration, and if you get a chance to stop by and look through the exhibit, it is fantastic. And that exhibit runs through July 8th, and it actually not only celebrates LGBTQIA here in Bloomington, but it's also part of Pride, the Twin Cities Pride. And later this summer, the Second Annual Bloomington Pride Celebration will take place on the East Lawn Civic Plaza on Saturday, August 13th. I'm looking forward to that. And I know you're involved in all of that and have been involved quite a bit. So Logan, thank you very much. Anything you would like to add to what I, anything?
Oh, yes.
Please.
Does it matter which side?
No, this one works. This one, yeah, this one.
Oh, scared, okay. Okay. Mayor, council, thank you for having me. When I was in the fifth grade, my class was waiting to be dismissed, and one of the girls in line asked me if I was gay. I barely knew what that was yet, but hearing it thrown around as an insult and hearing her tone of voice, I knew it wasn't good. So out of fear, I said no. That moment was just the start of a very long and dark time in my life, and I started to push people away and keep my head down and remain silent. Every day ended the same, just me in my bedroom, wondering why I was the way I was and why I was being treated this way, until eventually I passed out of exhaustion. As I went through elementary, middle, and high school, it seemed the bullying I faced was the price I paid for being different, and the thought of taking my own life creeped in my mind quite often. But at the end of those intrusive thoughts, I said, I can't. I can't because what will happen to my mother if she loses her only child? How will I get to live a great life if I don't choose to live now? What if there's someone out there just like me with no one to turn to? My mind was strong, and it was barely able to keep me afloat, and I'm grateful to be standing in front of you all here today, but unfortunately, there are many youth who don't, who aren't so lucky. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people aged 10 to 24. LGBTQ plus youth are at significantly higher risk, and even more so if they're LGBTQ youth of color. At least one suicide attempt is made every 45 seconds, and LGBTQ youth are not inherently prone to suicide risk because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather placed at higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized by society. This proclamation helps us work towards creating a safe community where everyone can feel welcomed, accepted, appreciated, and loved, and that could save a life. There is still so much work ahead of us in our society, but we can't forget the contributions and leaders of the LGBTQ plus community, specifically those that identify as Black, Brown, and Indigenous or a person of color who have been fighting for equality and equity from the start. For those asking why we need to have pride, why we need to be visible and accepted, this is not just about who we love, it's about who we are as people. Just in the past three years, when I lived in Maine, I got called the F slur as I walked from my car to my apartment. And when I lived in Ohio, the same thing happened to me in front of a Walmart as I walked my groceries to my car. I didn't tell any of those people that I was gay. I'm sure they made the assumption on how I was dressed or maybe how I did my hair, and it looked no different than how I do now. No one should have to go through that or feel unsafe in their own community. As long as people like that exist, then we will continue to stand. As long as people like that exist, then we will continue to stand up and be visible. Since moving to Bloomington in late 2020, I felt nothing but welcomed by the majority of the community. I was even invited to take part in the planning for Bloomington's first Pride Festival and now I'm helping to plan the next. On August 13th of this year, the second Bloomington Pride Celebration will be held on the east lawn of Civic Plaza from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. All are welcome to attend this family friendly event. Mayor and Council, we encourage you to attend and stand with us in solidarity as we celebrate acceptance, recognition and the contributions of the LGBTQ plus community in the city of Bloomington. Thank you.
Hold on, let's get an official picture. Proclamation.
Aw, you are so cute.
Bet you're talking to me. Thank you. That's yours. Thank you much. And I will say again, if you haven't had a chance yet, and it's just a couple of days old, but make sure you get in and see the exhibit in the Greenberg Gallery. It is, it is very impressive, so hope you get a chance to do that. We will move on to item three on our agenda, which is our consent business. And I believe Councilmember Martin has our consent agenda tonight. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. So so far I've got, myself will be holding 3.1 and Councilmember DeLisandro asked me to pull 3.5. Was there any other holds for this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and move approval of 3.2, 3.2 through 3.4 and 3.6 through 3.19. We have a motion in. Oh, second, Councilmember.
Second, sorry.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to accept the consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Let's skip over item 3.1, we'll come back to that. Councilmember Martin, let's start with item 3.5. Councilmember DeLisandro, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so I had two specific comments related to this. For those of you, I'm assuming that I'm not the only one that received doc, like replies or, or comments from constituents on this question. And I think the question is, was worth holding and having a dialogue about here as, in chambers. So the questions, there were, there was one question that I had, which was specifically, you know, should we choose to pave the, the parking lot? Are there options for permeable surfaces as opposed to paving it, right? Because there are options out there. And so that was just one of the, kind of a, just a generic question. Can we do something that's a little bit more environmentally friendly? It's gravel right now and I understand the challenges with the, with its potholes and things like that in the wintertime, but could we do something more eco-friendly there? I'll table that one because I'm sure that there's an up or down question answered there. But the other piece of course is, there's a legitimate question here from folks saying, when we do have parks maintenance money, do we have to use it for paving things as opposed to things like natural resource management? Or removing invasive species or fixing stairs as opposed to that? And I think it's, it's a, it's a question, I know that when we start thinking about the budget going forward in 2023 and beyond, I think we should have a real discussion about those kinds of trade offs. But in this particular case, I wanted to make sure we addressed any reasons why we couldn't do that. Maybe there are reasons of accounting purposes or whatever, where that money is coming from or other things like that that would make a difference. And if not, then, you know, what is the logic and reasoning behind that? And then specifically if Gerard Lake Park is getting any particular love as it relates to parks maintenance beyond this in the next year or two. Thank you.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Carl Keel, our Public Works Director, is available to speak to some of the details on the project itself, especially on the permeable pavement and options that exist there. And then I can address the follow up question too.
Mr. Keel, good evening.
Mayor and Manager, maybe a little background on the design of this project. So this was a project that was designed by our engineering group, kind of on behalf of the Park and Rec Department. And as kind of a standard for us, we go through this kind of a series of design criteria that involves both the pavement folks and then also our natural resources and stormwater people to decide what's kind of the most efficient way to go about this type of project. We do have a number of examples of permeable pavements that we've tried probably more experimentally over the, over the years. Generally speaking, what we've found is that while they work early in their life, they typically don't have a very long life and we actually spend considerably more money and probably have, are no more effective than some of our more standard ways of treating things. So in this case, there was consideration for permeable pavements, concrete or asphalt pavements. I think I had heard in some of the chatter this afternoon that there was some consideration about kind of a reinforced earth type of, of, of operation. We have tried that over the years and those have not stood up to kind of the functional needs of plowing and those types of things. The other thing that's part of this project is there are some special catch basins being installed that will collect some of the debris that currently just runs right off the pavement and into the wetland. So there is some BMPs or best management practices installed as part of this. I don't know if that answers your question, Councilmember.
It does, I appreciate the consideration, thank you.
And Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The budgetary issues?
Sure. I think that Councilmember DeLisandro has, has summed it up nicely in that, you know, this is a future budget conversation. Here's, here's the context I would put it in is six, seven years ago, the council was having a similar conversation about sustainability initiatives and it's taken us a little bit of time to ramp up sustainability. And I know that natural resources is now high on the mind for many people. And so I have no doubt that that's going to be an active conversation too about how we begin to build up our resources towards natural resource management projects. Now, it's fortunate that we are just starting our budget process. We're also looking at our strategic plan, which we've adopted and we'll be doing more work on to start identifying a work plan. So I think this is the good, a good time to start having that conversation. But it is going to come down to just the discussion around resources and how we're going to make decisions about where we apply them. In, in this case, I would say that we have, we have facilities, park facilities that we try to maintain. This is an area where I would say that this parking surface has been under, under invested for many years. It's not, I think there are safety issues, there are usability issues. And, you know, when it, when it rains and it just gets hard to use and people will appreciate the improvement that happens there. If, you know, is it better or worse than removing a major amount of buckthorn or some other project? I think it's just a matter of identifying what those natural resource projects would be and then assigning the, the resources to go along with it. But we, you know, we don't have a specific or several specific natural resource projects already identified. So it's, it's a little bit of an argument without an option at this point because we haven't specified where else we might allocate those monies in the absence or as an alternative to doing this project.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember DeLisandro for holding this item. I was also, I had also flagged it on my agenda. And some of the emails that we received also referenced the staircase. And I'm curious if you could talk a little bit about that. I also want to say I am fully supportive of the parking lot getting paved because I do walk Gerard at least once a week. And in the winter, I have almost had accidents in that parking lot and I have seen other people slip and fall because it's just so icy and horrible. So I am supportive of the parking lot being improved, but I also, of course, would love to see additional resources go to Gerard eventually. And there was this specific question around the staircase and feeling like it needed some improvement. So curious if we had any answers to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Carter. I don't have specific information about the staircase, so follow up with council after the fact. We'll get some additional info, see if it is somewhere in the, in the replacement plan. I can tell you that the parking lot improvements are a standard in our CIP. And so obviously when we're working through our CIP process too, well, that's the opportunity to identify more specific projects as well. Because, you know, when we have 95 parks, we have parking lots at most of those parks. And so it's a, it's a regular reinvestment that we're making.
Councilmember DeLisandro, any additional questions?
Well, I will move on to, I just wanted to make sure your question, you were satisfied first.
I didn't want to step on someone else asking, no, I think that's fine. I think, I think, you know, my only comment would be, I think some folks think about our, some folks think about resources, meaning financial resources, as dedicated to programs. And some people think about them as dedicated to places, right? And so in this particular case, it's a reasonable ask to say, if you have $150,000 for Gerard Park, what's the first thing that you would do with it, right? And, and I think that that's the mental model that some people have. And it's, that's not really what this is. This is really about, hey, we're paving 95 parks in order between one and 95 and we're coming around to Gerard, right? And so I think at this point, you know, we should have that conversation as part of how we may relook at the strategic planning and all to think about our resources differently. But given the way that it is now, I understand and I appreciate you addressing it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, I didn't mean to jump in there, I didn't realize you had more, more comments here, so pardon for that. Certainly appreciate the manager's comments around natural resources as we continue to try to mature that piece. And as long as you're looking at staircases, I'm getting quite a few emails about Moyer Parks. So as long as you're looking, I want you to look at that and any other staircases that are out there in our parks. I don't want to just exclude that just to my, my district, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a very quick question. I assume the parking lot is going to be in the same place as the existing parking lot and won't impact the hand that is there?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, it is the same parking, it is the same area. Yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments on this? Councilmember DeLisandro, would you like to move this?
I will. Sorry, motion to approve the plans and specifications for the 2022-401402 Gerard Lake Park Parking Lot and Dread Scott Trails Improvement Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Martin for item five on our consent agenda, or item 3.5, excuse me, on our consent agenda. No further council discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Doubling back to item 3.1, our donations for this evening. Councilmember Martin. Thank you very much, Mayor. As always, love it when the stars align and I get to do donations on my Consent Week. And this one was a doozy. So huge thank you to folks across Bloomington and organizations for your generosity. First off, to the Jefferson Softball Boosters for their great contribution to the scoreboard project over at Dread. Bloomington Athletic Association stepped up to help us get a new award cabinet over at BIG. I'm sure we'll be filling that up with Bloomington Awards real quick. Lot of contributions over to Creekside. And then another plug for the Pride Event coming up on August 13th. And a huge thank you to our partners like Mall of America, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Transfiguration and St. Stephen Churches for substantial contributions to help get that up and running. It's very appreciated. And then we had a lot of contributions to the Bloomington Police Department, in particular the K-9 Unit, and folks really stepped up for public health as well, especially maternal health. So again, just as everybody is thinking about getting out of town for summer, everybody's still thinking about how to support their programming here at Bloomington as well. And that's appreciated. And unless there is anything on that, I will move approval, acceptance and approval of the donations that's listed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter to accept our donations. That's item 3.1 on our consent business. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Councilmember Martin. We'll move on to item four, which is our hearings, resolutions and ordinances. And we have one public hearing this evening. And this is item 4.1, is a public hearing regarding code amendments for multifamily parking standards. And Mr. Michael Palermo from our planning staff is here this evening to lead us through this. Oh, the keyboard. Or the mouse, one of the two. There it is. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. No problem. As you may remember, a few months ago, we did a study session on multifamily parking and got some input from you and this is the ordinance we'll be providing. There we go.
That was new.
That was. All right. Ready? If you click one more time. So to, there's presenting tonight, multifamily parking update to our requirements. And really have three goals for this update. It's one to simplify, make it easier for developers as they come in. Right size the approach, we want to make sure we have adequate parking and continue to provide flexibility where we can. So to give you a little reminder of our existing code. Right now, we require with multifamily developments, a parking ratio, a number of parking spaces. And we break it down by the, the unit bedroom count. So for a one bedroom, it's 1.8 spaces, all the way up to a three bedroom or four bedroom, which is three spaces per dwelling unit. We also require that one space be provided enclosed in a garage. And that we also have a requirement for party rooms, that an additional space be provided for 100 square feet of a party room. I'll get into a little bit of what, how we apply that later in the presentation. We also require an EV charger for every 50 units. Trying to future proof our developments, understanding that EVs are coming. We also provide flexibility, so we have those as our base standards, but we provide opportunities or reductions in the opportunity housing ordinance broken down by affordability. And I'll get into more detail later in the presentation. We also provide proof of parking options. So instead of constructing all the parking upfront, you might provide what you consider adequate, knowing that if it isn't, we can have that space provided for later construction. There's also opportunities for shared parking. If you imagine an office building that has high demand for parking during the day, residential has more demand for parking at night, that might be a good complementary use to share parking. And then we also allow for travel demand management plans. These are plans submitted typically with our more commercial properties that show how they're going to reduce demand for cars, either transit passes or other options that are available, that you can get up to a 10% reduction in your parking. We also allow for high transit access reduction. And plan development is probably our most popular that you're familiar with, that a reduction, just an outright reduction in parking. And for most of these, we require some sort of traffic or transportation study that kind of shows that there won't be a huge, a negative impact with these reductions. So as we look to update our requirements, we looked at what other cities were doing. And this kind of breaks down a wide range that other cities are doing from all the way up to 2.5 in Savage, down to one space requirement in St. Louis Park. We also looked at the enclosed parking requirement. And it averages out to be about 1.85 spaces, whereas if you look at ours, in reality, it's about 2.0 spaces per unit. But as I just laid out with all those flexibility measures, this doesn't show the whole picture. What they're actually approving is probably much different than what their base requirement is. So understanding that, we decided to look more at what our actual requirements were or approval were. And so, as I said, it's about 2.0 per unit, which is our base requirement. But we ended up really approving about 1.7 spaces per unit for developments that were approved before the OHO was adopted in 2019. Since then, we've been approving developments at a rate of about 1.4 spaces, 0.4 or 0.5 spaces per unit, which ends up being about a 30% reduction under the opportunity housing ordinance. So if you average those out over the last 10 years, which is where we've seen most of our recent multifamily development, it's about 1.6 spaces per unit. And then to. And then to kind of corroborate that, we went out and did parking counts to see what is the actual. And it's about one-point-five spaces per unit is showing about what the real demand is out there for existing. We also did outreach with the Bloomington Housing Action Team, which is kind of an intersection of, uh, housing advocates, tenants, uh, property management companies, uh, different organizations, uh, that came and provided some great input. They really, the big takeaway we got from them was that transit maybe was not as impactful as we were thought. Um, the quality of transit really can have a big difference. But I also did direct outreach with developers and property managers, and this is where we found out that the enclosed parking requirement maybe wasn't as big of a barrier as, uh, we, we assumed it would be, that property managers really appreciated it. It's highly utilized during the winter months, being in Minnesota, and that it really was kind of a divide on the type of developer that kind of put, a developer who kept their property in the long term, they typically liked the enclosed parking, whereas someone who's looking to sell it real quick, they didn't want to do enclosed parking because of the cost, so. And we'll go on to the next slide. We'll get into that a little bit. But we also want to point out, uh, with our racial equity impact assessments that we're doing with our ordinances, uh, just seeing what those impacts might be. And it, it's important to point out that in our rental and our multifamily, which is predominantly rental units, it is majority BIPOC community. Our ownership rates, as you can see here, for white alone, non-Hispanic populations, twenty-five percent renter to seventy-five percent owner. You can see kind of breakdown by race and ethnicity that, uh, you don't compare in our BIPOC community on the ownership rates. So they're predominantly living in those rental units that will be impacted. So of course, this ordinance is not intended to create issues. So we looked at doing a little bit of outreach, and we've heard, uh, from Minneapolis, studies in Minneapolis, that towing is a big issue, uh, that's targeting BIPOC communities. So we wanted to see what was happening in Bloomington. And what we found was that there is some towing that is happening, but a little bit different than Minneapolis, where they're towing off the street. We're not doing that here. It is property managers that are doing that. And it's not so much a supply issue, which this ordinance is addressing. It's more of a management issue. Are, are they giving warn, adequate warnings? Is it adequate signage? Should the person have been towed in the first place? And, you know, they're kind of logistical things that we don't typically address in our zoning code. We tend to stay away from that, uh, outside a few minor, um, things in the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Uh, so we do, in the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, address management in the sense that we don't, uh, for affordable units, you're not allowed to charge for parking. So, uh, in this case, what we're hoping we'll see, as you'll see in the tweaks to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, we'll have more affordable units, which will hopefully be more beneficial. So as with everything, there's kind of pluses and minuses. But we're hoping this ordinance will be mostly positive. So, moving forward, what we decided to update was really to adjust those parking ratios, simplify it, and make it, um, easier for developers. And because we're adjusting those, we need to adjust the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, the reductions that are in that. What we decided not to address was other flexibility measures. Those were pretty much discretionary to begin with, so you can continue to access those and, and continue to utilize them. Uh, and then the enclosed parking requirement, as I explained, wasn't as much of a barrier, uh, from developers' perspective. And then we'd also wanted to point out that senior housing's not addressed because senior housing has its own parking ratios. And we've already kind of acknowledged that the senior population has different needs and, already in the parking, uh, requirements. So our update, uh, to simplify, we're moving from the four-bedroom, uh, ratios just to two. We'll do one-bedroom and efficiency units at one-point-six spaces per dwelling unit, and then two or more, at two spaces per unit. And we understand that, you know, with a three or four-bedroom, you do have that potential of having multiple, uh, roommates that might be driving. But typically with a three or four-bedroom unit, it's families that are occupying it. It's not more drivers that are, uh, needing more demand or driving that parking demand. And really, we don't get a lot of three or four bedrooms. We're trying to encourage that, but it's still a small percentage of a development anyway, so the impacts are pretty minimal. And then we are tweaking our language to the covered parking, just to, this is how we've been applying it, but to, to be clear, that structured parking can count toward your covered parking requirement. And then we're removing the, the party room requirement. This one, uh, with the party rooms, it ends up adding about four-point-five point percent to the parking requirement. And most communities don't have this because they're kind of already baking it into that, that base ratio to begin with. Some do call out, uh, specific guest parking requirements. You can see here, we just say you have to provide dispersed guest parking, so we don't get into the details. But most, yeah, just choose that, um, approach of saying, we're going to make sure that total number is correct and not kind of separate it out. Bloomington really was trying to hone in on a number of units and kind of chopping up the building to get that specific number. But, um, it really, that end number is what we're trying to get at. So, we felt that it was okay to remove that. But, you know, we do get that odd situation where there's a larger-than-normal party room that kind of our planners will recognize as, oh, are you intending to rent this to outside parties? That will generate, uh, a large, and so we do have that opportunity to provide a condition to say, this is only for residents to utilize. It's not a venue space, it's intended to be an amenity. It's, you know, accessory to that use. It's not, uh, for outside parties to use. So, our, our, uh, planning staff is kind of knows to look for that. But typically, these are only about a thousand or two-thousand square foot and meant for kind of small, like a baby shower or gathering. And demand is intermittent, right? So they're not, an event's not happening every night usually. It's once or twice a, a month, and so parking issues are pretty limited in, if there are issues. So our Opportunity Housing Ordinance, because we're reducing those base numbers, we want to make sure that we're not, uh, giving, uh, too much of a reduction and causing a problem. So our current requirements are listed above. As you recall, our, uh, reductions are based on income, the level of affordability, and the number of affordable units. So extremely low-income units, these are households of four that make about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So the most need, lowest rent, uh, that we can get, um, we were providing, if you provide the minimum nine percent under the ordinance, you can get up to a forty percent reduction if you're near transit. But if you provided more, you can get up to a fifty percent, so that twenty percent. And then for very low or low income, it was a thirty and twenty percent. And you can see here, we were, we had our designated transit area, which corresponded with Met Council. They have what they considered high-frequency transit. We kind of used their definition as the base. And that was, uh, um, serve, weekday service that had service more than every hour. Um, so more frequent, and it had weekend service as well. But as we explained earlier with the Bloomington Housing Action Team, they've mentioned, well, yeah, that's frequent, but it's usable, but it's really not going to change my car use, so, uh, a whole lot. It might be a little bit, but, um, so we wanted to add in a second tier where it, that, uh, our highest frequency transit is. So, beyond that, we also want to encourage, our transit-oriented development, we also want to encourage, um, more affordable units. So, I'll have you click on the next slide here, because our sixty percent, we've met our goal, our Met Council goals for twenty-thirty. These are kind of what we're allocated from the Met Council and what we should be, uh, striving for in our affordable housing. And because of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, providing these incentives and other incentives, we've managed to really encourage that sixty percent area median income. We've already surpassed it in those constructed, and we already have about four-hundred-and-fifty approved, so well above the goal, whereas we're still not there for our fifty percent, and we're not even close with our thirty percent. So, in this update, we're proposing to just remove the incentive for the sixty percent because we don't need that anymore, and to focus on the fifty and the thirty percent area median income. And as I explained, we, the transit, there's kind of two levels. We'll continue with the designated transit area because there is some impact to that. Uh, but the highest impact really would be in those, uh, that pinkish-purple area. Those are our station areas. That's where there's bus rapid transit and light rail that operate twenty-four-seven a day, usually about fifteen-minute wait time, if that. Um, it's reliable, it's constant, there's a station there, so it stops, always going to be there. So knowing that, within a walking distance of that, we want to encourage as much density as there. We want to encourage the units. Well, we are proposing to kind of tweak how we do our, um, Opportunity Housing Ordinance. And so we will now have kind of the three tiers, our tier-one, tier-two, and outside the designated transit area. So the tier-one is where we have, want that transit-oriented development, where people will be utilizing transit, maybe less car-dependent because of that, and have less demand for parking, um, than that middle tier, and then outside the area. And you can see, we also have chopped up a little bit different how we provide the affordable units. So if you provide nine percent at extremely low income, uh, thirty percent area median income, you can get fifteen percent in our tier-one. Um, but if you are providing up to fifty percent of your units at thirty percent AMI, you can get up to a forty-five percent reduction. And so you could see that these are a little bit lower than we were providing before because we had that reduction, and we kind of have an idea of what our lowest amount would be, where we'll start to see some real parking problems. And so this kind of takes that into account. Uh, so you can kind of see the gradation there between providing some fifty percent units or thirty percent units and what, how many of that is. It's kind of hard to explain it, so we put in a chart to make it a little bit more readable for our developers. And other than that, I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Council questions on this? Council on anything that Mr. Palermo brought forward? Councilmember DeLassandro.
Hey there. Thanks for being here today. Uh, hopefully these are really easy, just clarifying questions. When you do the one-point-six, like, one, you know, such-and-such divided by one-point, do you round up or you round down generally?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLassandro, uh, it's, yeah, I think it's point-five, we round up and.
Okay, so pretty typical. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. I was doing some math and trying to figure it out, and I was like, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, okay, the only other question I have is maybe one for Mr. Verberi, actually, because I think I've seen the, that before. The racial equity impact assessment, li- slide that we use, that we calculate, um, rental occupied versus homeowner occupied, um, are those, the, did those numbers come from the census? Or do they Bloomington-generated numbers? Like, do we get our own data there?
Now, look at Mr. Palermo, because he's our data expert.
Oh, okay, great. Fantastic. I didn't want to assume that, um, you, you would know that overall, but great, fantastic.
No problem, yeah. That's, I do provide a lot of these for, uh, I'm kind of the internal person. So, uh, yeah, this is from the American Community Survey from the Census. This is the latest one from twenty-twenty. Um, so it does lag a little bit, there is a little bit of an error, um, but it's kind of the best data we have. It, uh, available. To do it ourselves would be quite an undertaking, and then, you know, the benefit of using the census is you kind of have a year-to-year comparison, and we can track it over time. And, and this is what they call the five-year estimate, so it has kind of some statistical smoothing to it, so it should take some of that variation out that you might get year-to-year.
Does it get broken down at all between, um, uh, multifamily versus single-family residency and occupy, occupy, occupancy?
Unfortunately, it, it just does renter versus owner. But I can tell you that our, our, we have about thirteen-hundred rental, single-family rental units. Um, so while this is not exactly our multifamily, it's probably a good proxy for it. It's probably pretty similar ratio to that.
So, could I assume then that you're saying that seventy-five percent, uh, sorry, let me try this again, eighty percent of the, of the single-family units that we have are also rented by, uh, Black or African-American folks?
Yeah, I would suspect it has probably a similar ratio for the single-family rental.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Carter and then councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also have a clarifying question. So the map you showed with the transit areas, I assume that's just an example to show us where, um, development could happen with, that would have the increased flexibility, so that if, in the future, we have better transit across our city, that this map would change.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McCarrick. Yeah, so this is today what our transit is. Uh, what would meet that kind of high-frequency from the Met Council definition is that orange area, and then those station areas. And to be honest, that purple line is the D-line, that's not quite up and running yet. It's under construction, so, uh, that area technically, upon adoption, wouldn't fit under this definition, but once it is operational, it'll, that kind of middle area would then get into place. And if we hopefully get more bus rapid transit or light rail, then we can add more to those areas as well.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick questions here. Was there consideration of an overall reduction of parking standards? Uh, if we found that we needed one-point-four-five based on our count, why not just reduce everything to that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, for one, we do provide those incentives in the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. So if we just went to that number, then, then we're not providing an incentive anymore. And, um, that's a bigger policy discussion that I think, I, the feedback I've gotten from Planning Commission and other discussions is we want to continue how we're operating the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. There will be opportunity, I think, uh, next year or the year after, we'll be kind of updating our Nexus Study and some opportunity on how to tweak that and better refine that. Uh, but for the moment, it's been working well to kind of produce units, so that, that's one reason. And the other is that, um, parking fluctuates. It's, over time, it might even be lower than that, and we know that reductions, we continue, we'll have these reductions available, and our parking studies will kind of have to, if, if you go that parking study route, we'll kind of corroborate those trends that are happening. But, uh, you know, it's a moving target. And I think what we hope to do is, after this ordinance, is kind of continue to monitor and see what that actual demand is, because maybe it is lower, and that maybe a future update in a year or two would be warranted. Um, but this is kind of an incremental step.
Okay, thank you. Was there any consideration to, um, tying some of the ascent, incentives to if they provided ownership opportunities? As an example, if they provided, uh, units, you know, give them an additional, uh, reduction in parking if it was owner-occupied, and, because that's, I think, something we've talked a lot about, is trying to find ways to do that. And if we're going to use this as an incentive, could we use it in that way?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that, that's creative, and that's a, an interesting idea. I think the way that this is applied is to the multifamily properties, so three units or more, um, this would be applicable. We have townhome standards for kind of our townhome developments. Uh, but condo units would fall under this requirement as well. Um, at this time, condos just aren't being built. And to be honest, I think with the way that financing is structured, I don't think they, that you, I've never heard of kind of a mixed condo apartment, you know? Typically, it's a condo building, and then people are renting their unit out, um, rather than kind of an apartment building that has a few owner-occupied units. Typically, the developer wants to own that whole property. So in that case, um, you know, I think that's creative and an interesting idea, but I think in practically with the financing structure, it's probably not, not applicable unless you can get a, a condo unit to build. And at this point, there are certain state laws that kind of have put a, a cooling effect on developing condos with warranties of the developer, that they're, they're just not being built. It's, I think the last I heard was a thirty-to-one ratio on condos to rental apartment buildings, so it's just not happening.
No, and I appreciate that, and aware of those rules. The last item I had was one of the, in the OHO, one of the principles was integration. And so I was wondering if there was discussion of any concerns with regards to having a very strong incentive for one-hundred percent units qualifying for very low income in terms of exasperating concentration of poverty as opposed to integration? I know we ran into that on a, a recent project, where they put all the affordable units into one building, and all the market rates in another building, and frankly, I was very uncomfortable, but it seemed to meet the criteria, and this seems like it might exacerbate that problem.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that is a good point. I think it's a balance, right? We're trying to get units, and, you know, maybe it is a kind of phased development, and you're right, it is kind of, we do want that dispersal, um, ideally. But, yeah, I, I think, it, I don't have a good answer for you on why, you know, we just need to try and find a way to encourage, and that's kind of the best that we came up with. Because otherwise, you're looking at doing a fifty percent building, and then kind of, how does that work with incentive? And, yeah, it, 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 yeah, it's all ratios, right? So I, I can't give you a good explanation, but that's. So I can't give you a good explanation, but that's kind of how we landed on it with that hundred percent at the low income.
Councilmember Lowman.
I think I'll just pick up right where we left off right there. Yeah, I'm not sure if that slide is still available that Councilmember Carter had brought forward. One of the questions that I had, and I got a couple of other things here too, is just, was there any discussion from a staff perspective, given that and what my other colleague had said here about, you know, concentration of poverty and affordable housing in certain areas, given these, these standards here? Was there a discussion about that in terms of ways of defraying that and making sure that we're not seeing concentration in certain areas of the city?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman. So it really gets down to where our zoning allows multifamily, right? So we allow multifamily in several different zoning districts and I don't have a slide with it unfortunately, but I kind of showed. And so you don't have to provide affordable units at all to begin with. We have that fee and lieu option that you can utilize. So it really ends up down to the developer. The developer is going to be looking for different, a location that fits for them. Whether, if it's concentrating poverty, you know, if they're affordable income developer or affordable unit developer, they're looking for other funding sources, right? And those funding sources are also not going to want to concentrate poverty as well. That, those are scoring criteria that happens in those funding applications that they look at that, oh, all of a sudden we've got three, four developments that are creating in this area. So, so that, that's one mechanism that kind of prevents that from happening. Then I will also point out that these parking flexibility in the OHO, while they're kind of baked in, they're still at the discretion of council on whether or not to move forward. So there, there are different factors at play, but that is then one aspect to that as well. But ultimately, I think we're at a need that we're trying to encourage units. And I think we, the way that our zoning code is structured, it will kind of naturally disperse them to some degree. But if you're looking at that internal site controls, there's other mechanisms that hopefully we can do as, as a funder of projects as well, because this is one aspect to your funding package. And so likely if you're doing a higher affordability like that, you're usually asking for money either TIF or some other funding source that maybe there's leverage.
So essentially what I'm hearing is we're, we're basically leaving most of this up to, to market forces in terms of, and there are some from a zoning, I get the zoning piece of it, you know, there's, there's zoning pieces and then also then the council discretion. And so I just wonder, and we don't need to solve this today, obviously. So I want to be certain is that we're looking to see what are the best practices, you know, in other, other cities so that we don't find ourselves. Because, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't happen just, you know, you do one project, you're one, the next thing you know, oh, whoops, you know, here we are, you know, with that situation. So I just hope that we will continue to keep an eye on that and, and just maybe through measurements, just being sure that we're really keeping an eye that we're not doing that. And then just other couple of quick ones here. Wanted to thank you for your response in terms of the, the party rooms and, and how you responded to that, both in writing, that the general public didn't get a chance to see, but you've covered most of those items here. The one question I did see and wanted to ask was around guests. I saw that on that, they had a slide earlier where other cities are dealing with guests. How do we handle that? Is it that we have, have we just inflated the numbers or we just don't see a need for that to designate that? Just help, just a little bit of commentary on that. Appreciate it.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, I believe there were two other cities that actually require point five spaces per guest. Where most just kind of bake it in. So we, we, we're taking that approach where it's baked in, where we know that there will be guests. We acknowledge that there needs to be guest parking with the language in there that says needs to be dispersed throughout. But we aren't saying exactly what that number should be. And this gets into that kind of parking management because some property owners, you know, they typically have a garage that's has some sort of control to them. And then the other spaces, they're kind of up for, are they designated spaces? Are you paying for those surface lot spaces? And kind of it gets into a little bit more of a design issue that we don't get into those details as much. But recognize that there does need to be some guest parking. And so we kind of leave it a little bit nebulous and kind of open. But that is something that we look for when we go out there, when a project's done, that there is adequate designated parking for guests. But we aren't going to say how many that needs to be exactly.
Thank you.
So you had been to me to comment, Mr. Palermo, about developers saying that the, the impact of transit isn't as higher, isn't as important. I can't remember exactly how you phrased it. And it surprises me because actually that's the second time in about four days that I've heard that from, from a, you know, from a developer's perspective. Do you think it's a matter of the orange line in particular opening during the pandemic? And with downtown still not as far back as it has been in the past, does that have anything to do with that? Were, were developers, were they reflecting perhaps on, rather than the, the regional transit options that we have? That we don't have, you know, east, west city transit options? Any thoughts on that?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I think it is related more to that inter, intra-city transit. That while we do have that to downtown with the light rail and the bus rapid transit, that actually does have more of an effect because it is that rely, it's reliable. It's, it's frequent enough. Fifteen minutes is not too long to wait. Whereas if I'm at France in Old Chocopee, that fits in the area because there's a transit line that goes along Old Chocopee. But sometimes it's once an hour if that. So if you miss it, you miss it, you know? And on the weekend, I think it's, it's even less service. So I think that's where you really struggle to do kind of, if you need to take that bus to Cub Food, it's, it's harder. Whereas in those transit oriented areas, we have kind of, already we have grocery stores. You know, there, there's a reason why they chose those as the stations, right? Because they have grocery stores, they have sidewalk infrastructure, at least improving that area. There, there's a density there that's already kind of created it. So you don't need to be going outside those areas as much. Whereas if you're not in those station areas, you do have to kind of move a little bit more to get all your day to day needs. So, so it is harder to utilize. It's, it's doable, but it's, it's not as impactful as that station area where I can have most of what I need right there.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I suspected as much, but that's interesting to hear that confirmation. Council, any additional questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just thought of one additional question. It had to do with the size of units. I know that's one of the other things we've talked about quite a bit is, you know, it's one thing to have an affordable studio apartment. Another thing to have an affordable three bedroom unit. And am I understanding it correctly that the parking needs for the larger unit are probably smaller? Because there's, you know, if you have a studio, one person probably has a car versus a family and they maybe have kids that aren't driving yet on average.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, yeah, it, it can be, you know, you see a three bedroom and you think, oh, that would generate more, but it probably doesn't. You know, it has that potential. You could potentially have three roommates living in a three bedroom unit. But, you know, it's typically probably going to be a family with, you know, two parents and two kids that are living in a three bedroom. So, but to kind of get what you were getting at, you know, by having just that one ratio, we're not dinging you for providing those larger units. We want you to kind of encourage that a little bit. And that's kind of an indirect way to encourage that. So you don't have that extra cost of providing more parking for those.
That's good, because I think that's important to incentivize as much as possible. I think that's one of the unmet needs in the community.
Council, if there are no further questions, this is a public hearing and I think we, we're about time to get to it. Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Don't go too far. So this is a public hearing. This is item four point one, and I will call the public hearing. On item four point one, with code amendments regarding multifamily parking standards, is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item four point one? Anyone in the chambers? Mr. Sable, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item four point one?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have one caller, starting with six, one, two, nine, six, five, and I will unmute the caller. And the caller is unmuted. If you wish to speak, you can speak to item four point one.
Good evening. Were you calling in for item four point one?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you very much. So is that our only caller?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, that is the only non-staff member on the line.
Very good. Last call for anyone in the chambers to speak to item four point one. Council, no one coming forward. We've got no one on the phone who wishes to speak to item four point one. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item four point one. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. So council, item four point one, we've heard some, the breakdown of the, the parking requirements for multifamily units, the code amendments that would take place, some of the thought that went into it. Is there any thoughts, any questions, any more discussion that we need to have on this? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy you've been one to kick this off. I, first of all, thank you, Mr. Palermo. This is, I think this is a really creative solution and a really, just a really good way of thinking about policy and addressing, I think, a couple of needs that I know we've had significant conversation on. And I just, I appreciate the thought that went into this. I think for myself, I, I still think we could go a little bit lower with the parking ratio, but I will probably always think that. But I, I think this is a good first step and I, I think it allows us to have that sort of iterative process to, to come back and evaluate as, as things move forward. I, one thing that just struck me during the presentation and it's, it's kind of a, a sort of arbitrary thing. But I always get a little bit uncomfortable when we have these charts of, you know, comparing Bloomington code requirements to other cities. And other cities, it's like one line and it's like this big and Bloomington's is like this big. It always just makes me a little uneasy and makes me think we're, we're overthinking it a little bit too much. And I think in this case we were. I think this simplifies it. I think it, it gets at some really important issues, including incentivizing more affordable units at, at lower, lower median, area median income percentages. And I think that's really important. So I think this is a really good step forward and I, I plan to support it. Thank you.
Council others? Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember De La Sandro. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think it's moving in the right direction. You know, the questions I asked, I do still have concerns about those. Would love to see more with the homeownership and in general, I'd be more apt to just reduce the overall parking if that's what's actually needed. And then I think ultimately that'll get us more units overall. And at the end of the day, I think the more units, the better. For the economy and for the housing industry, we know there's a huge shortage of housing within there. And so I think if we could make all of the units more affordable, that would be great. But I, I really do appreciate that this is shifting, focusing on what we've talked about of the hardest to provide the fifty percent and thirty percent. And so I commend that work. I think directionally it's good. Obviously, you know, maybe some things to think about for the future there. So that's all I'm bringing that up for, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember De La Sandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was gonna just check in with Councilmember Nelson about some of his concerns regarding the, the one hundred percent, thirty, thirty percent AMI, just, just because it was kind of a bit of a, you know, spittle, spidey sense for me too. But it doesn't sound like it, it's something that you would be interested in potentially changing or even eliminating that line from the table or anything like that at this point.
Um, if I, if I can, Mayor. I, you know, I would be open to changing it. But my sense is that if we're, someone's going to bring forth a hundred percent at very low income, they're going to be asking for a bunch of subsidy and we'll have, we'll have the opportunity through TIF and things like that to do that. I just, there's no way to, to build that in the marketplace as it is right now without some type of TIF and things like that. So, and I don't even know if, if there's an example of a project. I know we've done some at eighty percent, which is, you know, workforce housing in my mind. This would be a very different type of project. And I can't imagine in the marketplace you can build that without significant subsidy. And so I think we'd have multiple opportunities to review that.
Thank you. That's it.
Council, anything additional? Councilmember Coulter, I do, I do agree with you. You know, you could go lower on this. My, my concern is always that I would rather go incremental and make sure we're doing it right and not pushing parking out onto the streets. Because I think that would be, that, that is not what we want to do in this case. We want to make sure that if developers are building units, that they have the parking to go along with it. So. But I agree, it's, it's interesting to see the number of needed cars decreasing. So. Council, anything additional? If not, council, action on this? Councilmember Lowman?
I'd be happy to move this unless somebody else is dying to move it.
Councilmember Lowman.
All right, here we go. Mayor, I'll move a motion to adopt an ordinance to update parking requirements for multifamily buildings and associated flexibility in the opportunity housing ordinance, thereby amending chapters nine and twenty-one of the city code.
Second, motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Martin to adopt the ordinance to update our parking requirements for multifamily buildings and associated flexibility for the opportunity housing ordinance. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Lowman?
Uh, Mayor, I move a motion approving summary publication of the, the written ordinance that we just passed.
Second, motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Martin for summary publication. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Mr. Palermo, thank you very much. Good work on this. I know it was a long, long process. But very impressive. Well done. Thank you for doing that. That is our last public hearing for the evening. We'll move on to item five, our organizational business. And our first item under organizational business is item five point one, which is a discussion, a continued discussion of our Earn, Sick and Safe Leave Ordinance. And Mr. Sable and Mr. Zoguni, I believe, or Zuniga are going to take care of us on this one.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I will talk briefly while Peter works his way up with a bad wheel. Yeah, thank you. This is an item that is a continuation from several discussions that the city council has had. Just for the benefit of the viewing public at home, this idea was first approached in February of twenty twenty-one. The idea of a task force was developed in April of twenty twenty-one. In June of that year, a task force was appointed. That task force met from periods of July through November slash December of twenty twenty-one. The Earn, Sick and Safe Leave Task Force presented to the city council in February, or sorry, in January of this year. A secondary discussion was held in February of this year. A public hearing notice was issued in March and a, the public hearing was held in this room in April of twenty twenty-two. And as part of that conversation, there was a desire to have additional outreach efforts both the community members, the business owners and reengage the task force members in that, in that conversation. And so since that time, we have engaged in a number of outreach efforts, both within the business community, but also then at some sessions that were hosted at the, at the Mall of America, at their space. And Rich Hogue and his team were really gracious hosts for us to not only meet with their tenants, but also up, open up their meeting space to meet with individual businesses, business owners in Bloomington. As I did share, the council request was to get some additional input on the ordinance. And so as a staff direction, we did reengage the Earn, Sick and Safe Leave Task Force members to do outreach. We did reestablish the Let's Talk Bloomington survey tool, which had an additional four hundred views in that last sort of timeframe. We developed a frequently asked questions tool and developed that's attached in the packet. We did a direct mail at over two thousand businesses with information, connection to the online survey. I had a handful of business owners call me directly and I also did the listening sessions one-on-one at the mall. And so I had really robust conversations with individual business owners, city staff. And participated with the tenant meeting with the, with the mall business owners on May fifth with over a hundred participants offering feedback and input. And so from that standpoint, we have gathered additional information. I know that there was a request to try to approximate how many businesses in Bloomington fall within which size. And unfortunately, the, the data is not precise. And so we had to try to back into it using some combination of self-reported numbers that folks, that business owners would issue either in response to a survey or in a question that we would ask. And so, you know, we think it, it's estimated that forty percent of small business, businesses employ fewer than five people. But that does also include self-employed individuals in that category. But that category of small, we think. of small, we think 40% is an accurate representation. If it's not precise, it is at least accurate. We did get some feedback and requests for some language changes in the ordinance. And I'll invite Mr. Zuniga up to the podium. He can share what some of the technical requests were for changes to the draft ordinance as it was presented in the April time, oh, excuse me, at the April meeting. And so if there are no questions for me, I'll turn it over to Mr. Zuniga.
We may come back to you, but we'll go to Mr. Zuniga. Mr. Zuniga, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So as Mr. Sable said, we did receive some feedback for clarification to a few pieces of the ordinance. I'm gonna start from kind of the back to the front, just because I think most of the discussion that the council will have is gonna be in the changes in the, the front of the ordinance. So I'm gonna start with section 23.112. When we talk about termination or separation from an employment, and if an employee returns to the same employer within 365 days, the ordinance said that if the employee returned, that they would get their accrued leave back. And one of the points of clarification that, that was submitted to us was, well, what happens if the employer paid out that accrued leave upon the separation? They shouldn't be able to then get their accrued leave back. So we did add clarifying language there, that if the accrued leave had not been paid out, it would be restored. The, the second change was in response to council feedback for staff related to requiring a doctor's note for three consecutive absences, and if the employer did not provide healthcare benefits. So we took that feedback, and we changed section 23.07, so that if the, it would not be a violation if the employer provided healthcare benefits. And so as part of that feedback, we did reorganize some of the uses that employee can use accrued leave for, just to make it easier to rewrite that section. So nothing was taken out. It was just reorganized so that we could write that additional change into this, to the ordinance. The final clarification point that we made, which also could be a subject of, of substantive changes, was how we calculated the business size. Right now, the ordinance requires us to take the average number of employees per week over the last calendar year or 12 months. In doing that, the previous language said that if an employer had five or less employees, they would have to provide unpaid benefits. If the employer provided, has six or more employees, they'd have to pay, paid time off. But taking the average, we might end up with 5.5 employees. So it created some gray area of whether they had to provide paid or unpaid leave. And so what we did is we clarified that. Right now, as the language stands, we rewrote it that employees, employers with six or more employees had to provide paid benefits. And then an employer with less than six employees would have to pay unpaid benefits. And so those are, right now, the, the technical changes that we've made to the ordinance since you've last seen it. I'm happy to take any questions related to that.
Council questions of Mr. Zuniga. Specifically, generally, in general, but specifically on the three items that he brought forward as the technical changes. Mr. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to be sure that I'm absolutely clear. So let's say we have a, a worker or a resident that has an issue of abuse. There isn't, there wouldn't be a requirement the way that we have changed it technically, that would, if, if health insurance isn't provided, that would require that person to return back to work without that, that employer providing health insurance.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, could you rephrase the question or ask it again so that I can understand?
Let me, let me ask it in a different way. So is there any provision if the employer does not provide health insurance? So let's say somebody has abuse or that type of thing that takes, takes place with them, that would require that person, let's say they're getting mental help or that kind of assistance, and they want to use this, this, this benefit? Is there a requirement now that would, would say, okay, I don't have health insurance? Or that, but the employer doesn't provide the health insurance, that would require them to then show up to work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, there's no requirement, if I understand your question correctly. Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick technical question on the change you made. The, this business size, six or more or less than six, that's still an average of the trailing 12 months. Is that accurate?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that is correct.
Thank you.
Counsel others, Councilmember DeLisandro.
Just to follow up on that really quickly, the trailing 12 months, does that mean that it fluctuates? So if, so when does that start, I guess, is the question? Like, what, what, what's the trailing 12 months? Like, is it April 1st? Is it June 1st? What's the trailing?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, we would look at the point that we would start an investigation, or we would receive the allegation of a violation. And then we would look at the 12 months preceding that violation.
Okay. So for example, just to make sure I'm understanding, if, if, if there was a violation that came in, in October, you would go back to the previous November and look at a trailing average?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct.
Okay. And if, if it happened in April, you would go back to the previous May? Okay. And so that, that could mean that it fluctuates for the employer throughout the year, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Mr. Zuniga or Mr. Sable? Thank you. Don't go far. I know you can't, but it's... Well, counsel, when we first talked about this back in April, we, I know there were some folks who were ready to move forward with it, but I know also there, the consensus, or the majority of the council, after hearing that we didn't get the full feedback, or the feedback to the level that we were hoping to get, and the engagement that we were hoping to get, asked for additional engagement. And I do want to commend Mr. Sable and the folks in the outreach teams and the, and the task force for the work that they did do. It, it, it was certainly much more robust than what we had originally, much more, much greater outreach, much more engagement than we had. Is it, you know, is it perfect? Is it as much as we could have had? Well, no, because we, we always run into that. We always run into that situation where there could have been more. We could have gotten more. We could have talked to more folks. And eventually, we get to the point where we use the information that we have, and we move forward with it. And so again, thank you, Mr. Sable, for the work that you did with this to, to gather more information. Thank you to the Mall of America for your leadership in this, in, in bringing us back to the table to talk more about this, and to get more input from your, both your workers and your businesses at the Mall of America about how this would affect them directly. The questions that we had and the specific changes, the technical changes that Mr. Mr. Zuniga brought forward regarding the payout of the benefits, the necessity of a doctor's note, and the business size, are all things that are, were questions that we brought forward, and we got, we got resolution, I think, in the document in front of us, in terms of where, where they landed based on the discussion that we had. To, to borrow a phrase, an offused phrase by Councilmember Coulter, is, is this, is this the ordinance that I would have written? No, probably not. I might have written it a little bit differently in a few different ways, but I think it's a, a strong ordinance that we have in front of us right now. It will put us in a good position moving forward. It will certainly benefit the employees of Bloomington. And ultimately, I think it will benefit the employers to the point that, given the, the labor market today, to be able to provide this to an employee, I think will be a benefit. I think it will be something that is, is looked at for folks as a draw, as an opportunity within Bloomington, within the, the employers of Bloomington. I'm glad to see that we are as consistent as we can be with our surrounding communities who are also using it to avoid the additional troubles or labors for our, our employers. We have to navigate that between cities. And so again, perfect? No. Would it, is it something that I can support? Yes, it is, because I think it's an important step forward that we need to, we, we need to move on. And in questions that I have received and have talked to others about, the point people making, well, this, this, this should be done at the state level. I mean, whether or not it's appropriate at the local level, it should be done at the state level. And my response to them is, yes, it should be considered very seriously and, and moved on the state level. The fact it is, the fact is, it has not been, and it's fallen to cities to take the leadership role on this. And it's similar to many other items that cities have taken leadership roles on and have moved forward that have ultimately become state law. The, the indoor smoking ban is one. T21 is another. There are, there are other examples where cities basically have to take the lead before the state can come along. And I think this is one of them as well. So I'm in support of this. I think it's, it's an important step forward. And interested to hear feedback or, or moving forward on this. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate your, your, your comments, especially about those questions that are asked about, you know, from the state or federal level. This should kind of rest there and do nothing. And one of the things that, that in particular, kind of gets my intention, you know, given, you know, we are a health board, and we just came out of, you know, out of COVID. And, and there's possibilities kind of going forward where, you know, these illnesses can come forward. And so it's necessary that we protect the general public, especially, we just got out of having our hospitality industry. I've had, you know, certainly members of my family who've owned, both my mom and dad owned a restaurant here. That's how our family originally got here to, to Minnesota. And my uncle serving as head chef, one of the hotels that's no longer around, the Thunderbird. It, it is critically important that we have these, these types of things. One of the questions, though, that I do have, Mayor, as we kind of move towards this, is, you know, we had a committee that was gathered together to, you know, really put together, you know, this piece that has a nice cross section of the community. And granted, we could have done better. You know, that's our first crack at it. And I, I look at some of the other ordinances, both in Minneapolis and St. Paul, in that they have a kind of a standing committee. And I wonder if it makes some sense. I know we can't necessarily, you know, erect this thing today, but I wonder if we were to put this, if we were to pass this today in there so that staff can have an ongoing committee? Because I just, you know, these other cities saw it necessary, and I can't imagine our city wouldn't see it necessary. And so I just wonder if we might not consider adding that to this provision, if we do pass that today.
I would agree with you, Councilmember Lohman. It's a worthwhile discussion to have. I don't think it's germane to what we're, what we're considering this evening. I would hate to try and cobble something together at this point and, and put that together. I do agree, it's, it's a worthwhile conversation to have.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, if there was interest in the, by the council to do that, my expectation obviously is that the proposed enactment date here would be close to a year from now. We would have a fair amount of time to work through exactly how best to populate and task a group like that to support the, the work that's being done here. So I don't think it needs to be done by ordinance. It can certainly be done by policy.
Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Coulter.
So we have talked about this topic a lot. There's been a lot said. I think the case has been strongly made. And I think Mr. Sable mentioned a February 2021 meeting where I think maybe, maybe we had our first official conversation. But I know I can say that this conversation has been happening since my time started on council. And I'm assuming that it has been brought up, it was brought up before my time on council. It was a question that, when I ran for office in 2019, was asked at every single candidate forum. So we know that there's been interest in our community. And then, of course, with the pandemic and everything that happened in 2021, or 2020, our conversations were delayed, which was understandable. But of course, the pandemic just demonstrated in a really stark way how much we need to have an earn sick and safe time policy in Bloomington. And not just because of the sickness and the death that we saw with COVID-19. That's a, a huge reason. But also the dramatic increase in domestic violence that we saw, and domestic violence related homicides. And so, you know, I come at this from a really strong public health approach. I took very seriously the concerns that we, we heard from the small business community, from other business partners in the community around engagement. And so that's why I supported the additional outreach and engagement, and thank staff for all of the work that they did to make sure that that happened appropriately. Also thank the task force that put many, many hours into designing a really great policy. And so I'm very, very excited to support this tonight. You know, we've heard from many residents in Bloomington over the last week that they'd like to see us support this. And so, you know, I really hope that, that we can get this done and move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I will have more extensive comments later. I, I want to give other folks a chance to speak. At the risk of taking another whack at a hornet's nest, I'm wondering, I'm hoping, I'm going to put this to my, my colleagues on the council, that we can approve what I believe would be a technical change to meet what I believe is, was our original intent, in addition to being consistent with the ordinance as it's written in Minneapolis currently. And I'm referring to its section 23.07, and it's the, the cutoff between the requirement for paid and unpaid leave. In Minneapolis, or in our current ordinance, that number is six. In Minneapolis, that number is five. I, I think, I mean, it's going to be a fairly small, I would think, slice of businesses that would fall in that five to six range. But I think it would make sense, since we have talked about the need for consistency and, and all of that, in addition to, I believe, my recollection, our, our sort of original intent. I am hopeful that, that my colleagues on the council would accept what I would call a, a friendly amendment, simply to change that number from six to five, and that staff could make that change from here on out.
Mr. Zuniga or Ms. Manderscheid, I believe, in effect, the way the language is written, that's what we do here. Is that correct? With the less than six? Or am I understanding that incorrectly?
Mayor, I defer to Mr. Zuniga on this.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, the previous version of the ordinance said that if you had five or more employees, then it would be paid leave. The way it's written now is that anything below six employees, so 5.8, you know, 5.5, would be unpaid. And so anything above six or more would be paid leave.
Okay. So, okay, but this is, sorry, explain that to me again, because I'm, I'm, the way I understood it was that, so it was, it was, okay, sorry, processing this. I'm, I'm getting there, I promise. So the original ordinance was more than five is, is paid leave, and five or fewer was unpaid? Is that correct?
The original ordinance read five or more. And so, you know, of course, being a non-lawyer and can't do math, you assume that it means six or more, because people are whole people. And so you think in whole numbers. So if it said five or more, kind of creating that gray area, I think what you're proposing would be a technical issue, and we can certainly adjust that.
Okay. That, that's what I was getting at, is, is, because that was my recollection from our original discussion, is that it was, it was five or more. And in this case, that, that number essentially becomes six or more. So I, I would view that as, as just lining it up with our original discussion and being a, a technical fix. And I'm hoping I'm not causing too much heartburn for our legal staff.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor members, just a point of clarification. So there's six mentioned a couple of times in, on page 135 of the agenda packet, clauses G and H. Just want to be clear that we all understand what sections we're talking about. Are there other sections?
That would be the only section.
Okay. And so is, is it my, is it my understanding of what you're talking about, to change the sixes in G and in H from six to five?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. That makes sense.
So do I, I guess, here's another question. Do I have to move that as an amendment and get council support for that?
Mayor members, you could move it as a part of your motion.
Okay.
Assuming that you, everybody else is gonna come along with you. Otherwise, that wouldn't be a successful motion.
Fair enough. So I guess what I will say is...
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. That I'm hoping I will be able to make the motion, and that is my intention, to make that, to include that as a piece of the motion.
Councilmember Coulter, I would encourage you to make the motion, then.
Okay. Well, I don't know if anyone else has other comments.
We, we can, we can have the discussion based on what you have laid out there. We can, we can have the discussion based on what you have laid out there.
Okay, I get what you're saying now. I'm with you. Took me a moment. So Mayor, I am moving the, I am making a motion to approve the ordinance, correct? Or am I making a motion for the amendment?
My understanding is you'd make a motion for the ordinance as written, as, as written here. But with the, with the amendment that in items G and H, it becomes five instead of six.
Okay, I really am tracking you now, I promise. All right, Mayor, I will move to adopt an ordinance adding chapter 23 of the city code establishing earned sick and safe leave in the city of Bloomington with the amendment as laid out.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Loman. Everyone clear? We're, we're basically talking about the, the motion, the ordinance as written, but simply changing in item 20, 23.07 under G and H, we change an employer with six to an employer with five. Or an employer with less than six to an employer with less than five. Everybody understand what we're talking about now? All right. Councilmember D'Alessandro wanted in and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember D'Alessandro.
I think I'm confused, but that's okay. Because we were having a discussion before the motion, but, so my comments were maybe before the motion, but it doesn't really matter, I guess. You're just trying to move us on and I think that's great. So I had, I actually did have a question. We, I thought we were supposed to see the cost of enforcement as part of the, tonight, because we moved things to June and we were going to get both the money portion and the code portion. And I didn't see that. So I was just kind of curious if, if we are not actually seeing that tonight?
Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we've estimated a little, about $200,000 annually because of the two staffing positions that would be added for the compliance. It's an attorney position and then something akin to a paralegal or, or legal support.
Given that we don't have, well, okay, so, yeah, I think otherwise I'm good. Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson was up next. Did you have a question, Councilmember Carter, specific to this? Councilmember Carter?
Yes, just a clarifying question. Thank you, Mayor. So the two staff positions, so weren't those to support a comment, like some other enforcement work too, including the conversion therapy ban and something else? So it's not just for earned sick and safe?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to make every, make sure the public is aware of that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Similar line of question, what is the cost to the city or its employees with regards to this? Particularly with the regards to the expansion of the seasonal to 365 days? Do we have an estimate of that?
Councilmember Nelson, can you ask that again?
What will the cost of this ordinance be to the city for its employees?
In particular, I think the seasonal employees would.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the, the applicability of the ordinance requires a certain number of days. So I, I think there are very few exposures because of our seasonal, the, the term of our seasonal employment. So I know that Assistant City Manager Sable has looked at that.
Mr. Sable.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, to your question on the, the impact. So we have estimated that our park and rec seasonal staff work approximately 100, sorry, 100,000 hours annually. Equivalent of about 50, full-time equivalent positions. Of those that work more than 90 days, that number goes down by 75%. And so we would see a 25% of 100,000 hours, so about 25,000 hours. And if you calculate the, just rough math, it essentially adds 3% of the carrying cost because it's one hour for every 30 worked. So we would have essentially a 3.3% increase in our price model, so to speak. And the, the difficult calculation is, is the hourly rate is different for lifeguards versus park maintenance workers. So the precise number is not exact, but you, you can add three and a half percent cost to this program for those seasonal workers that meet the threshold of working for more than 90 days.
Okay. And then for clarification for me, so it was my understanding that you had to work 40 hours in a year to get this, but you had to be there for at least 90 days. Is that right? There's, there's two criteria?
Mr. Zuniggo.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, you have to work 30 hours to earn one hour.
To earn one hour?
Correct.
But you have to work at least 90 days?
You, you start to accrue from the first day of employment, but you can't use it until after the 90 days of employment.
Okay. So then my question is if you're accruing it from the first day you work, why would you not be able to carry that over under this ordinance to the next season? Why would those start, not start to count? So if you worked 80 days one summer and then you came back the next summer, if you start accruing it from the first day, wouldn't it carry over under this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, it would carry over if you returned within 365 days.
Okay. So then we'd be back to the 100,000 hours, not the 20,000 hours. And so instead of 3%, we're looking at four times that, we're looking at 12%.
Well, I think that's assuming that everybody comes back for the second summer. And I don't know what the, the attrition rate is from summer to summer. But I, I think that's, that would, that would, that would work off of that assumption, but I don't know that that's the case.
Okay. And part of the reason I bring that up is the task force recommendation was 90 days. And I know this council had asked to extend that. I'm still not very comfortable with the 365 days. I, I think it's, it's too much. I think what we had looked at was trying to find the way to figure out, you know, those employees that are going to continue their work, but for some reason, they don't work for a few months. I mean, the example I had brought up at the time was road construction. I mean, I know it shuts down in November and then they start gearing up again and getting ready in March. And so they're, you know, laid off for a few months, but there's every expectation they're coming back. That's just the work cycle and they go ice fishing or do whatever they do. So at least the ones I know. So that part is still of concern to me. I'm still concerned just, you know, even just having this conversation here, that there are things that I don't understand about this ordinance in terms of, you know, how does hybrid and, and work from home work? And would an employer reasonably expect that if they had a hybrid environment and their employee had a sick kid, that they would just work from home that day? As opposed to taking paid sick leave? How does that work? If someone has a employee that has a hybrid environment and they live in Bloomington, but their office is in Edine or Eden Prairie or wherever, you know, how do those hours accrue based on that? You know, if they take phone calls in the evening and things like that, there's some complications that I'm not totally sure have all been worked out at this point. One of my other concerns is one of the things we're trying to do is bring in events. We had the Super Bowl and the Final Four, and how does this impact our ability to attract those types of events? And when people come in, you know, they probably have advanced teams and things like that. My guess is they probably don't meet the 90-day threshold. So they may meet the, starting to accrue on that, but they probably don't meet that. So that, my guess, but if anybody can clarify if they've thought through that, i- is that accurate? That most of them wouldn't be here 90 days and so it wouldn't apply to them. Or they accrue it, but not ever be able to use it. So, yeah.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson. I think the questions are good ones, right? Because often we just have, there are some known unknowns and there are unknown unknowns. Sorry for me to break out the Rumsfeldian logic on you in, in the middle of a meeting. And so I think that a couple of the items that you have raised are good questions, which is why we've asked for a, an implementation period that is close to a year. Our compliance people will be able to potentially identify those and ferret those out and bring back minor tweaks to the council as necessary. Also getting feedback from the business community too will, you know, because things will come up for them inevitably as they're looking at administration or operationalizing this. The, the point that you make about the hybrid frankly is the one that I, I think has the most likelihood to create just complication. And, and I think that's one where we can go back to our peers in Minneapolis and St. Paul and Duluth and see what they have learned over the last two years and how they are administering their ordinance to respond to them.
I think that's good. Just a couple other quick things. So Mayor, you had mentioned that, you know, a lot of the feedback we got was this should not be at the city level. And you gave a very nice answer to that. And, you know, I think a lot of times I've been around politics and don't consider myself a politician, but I've been around it long enough to know that a lot of times when people say, well, that's just not the right level, that's just, they're, they're against it. You know, I've seen that, I've seen that played and I'm not saying that's the case all the time. And in this one, I strongly believe this is a state issue. And so my question, is this in our legislative policy to advocate for this at a statewide level? Because a lot of these complications that we're looking at go away if the state just does this. And I can't imagine anyone at the state level would argue against 40-hour work week and overtime if you work more than that. I can't imagine anyone at the state is going to argue about, you know, someone having a baby and being able to spend some time with their new kid or adopting a kid or something like that. There's just basic things that no one's going to argue about. I can't imagine you'd argue that you should have to go to work sick. I just, it makes absolutely no sense that you would have to work when you're sick or when your kid is sick. I don't understand why the state can't get this done and I want to just make sure it's in our legislative policy. Because all these complications that we're looking at, they go away, most of them. You know, this hybrid thing, like it doesn't matter if, if my office is in Eden Prairie and I'm at home hybrid working. If I can work, I work. If I can't because I'm too sick, I don't. And there's a way to deal with that. So I guess, short question, is it in our legislative priorities?
Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I believe we do have this in our passive lobbying. We can certainly bolster it and even advance it to active lobbying if that is a request and a priority for the council.
Okay, thank you. So I guess the other item that I do, and then we had a request from some of the tenants at the Mall of America to look at that six, five, but maybe to raise it up because it would meet a lot of their smaller employees. And frankly, from the feedback I've got from the business community, that is one I'm sympathetic to. That, you know, you know, when we look at the data, you know, a large corporation is in a better position to pay this and to drive some of the smaller locally-based companies out of business. And that's something I'm very sensitive to. And so I would actually be very open to raising that limit a little bit. I don't know if we'd go to the 15 that was requested, but maybe a 10 on there. Just because I do think, I, I do think it's an issue. I do think there are ways of making sure that people have that time off. But a lot of these positions, you know, you may be scheduled for Tuesday, but you, you know, you're sick or your kid's sick. So you work Thursday instead or something like that. You still do the hours, you do the time. And there's a way of, of doing that. I understand the ordinance does not force the employee to get someone to cover their shift, put that burden on the employer. I think that's fair and reasonable. But give the employer that opportunity to fill that shift and find a different time for you to work those hours. And I think kind of, I think that's a fair balance. So, you know, my struggle right now is the 365 days and the, the employee limit on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember D'Alessandro.
Just a quick follow-up question on the, on the, the cost. Is the, is the education costs that we're going to bear over the next year in getting the business community and, and everybody up and running on this, is that already borne in our current budget or is that additional costs associated with this? Or will the lawyers do that or what? I'm not sure.
Look at Assistant City Manager Sable on that one.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember D'Alessandro. So the staff that will be hired from, in the attorney's office will be coordinating much of the outreach. They will use my time and some co-ed time. So it would be sort of not new dollars, but redirected dollars for that engagement. But the implementation phases would be done with the attorney's.
So, so do we know what we'll stop doing in co-ed, for example, to do this instead? I'm just curious. If we haven't thought about that yet, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, a lot of that engagement will start occurring later this year. And we'll work with COED to figure out that issue of what may not get done. But we're also building work plans for 2023 where we expect to see very heavy engagement as we get closer to implementation. And we're developing those work plans in the next couple of months here. So we'll certainly have plenty of time to factor it in.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that.
Ms. Manderscheid, you want to chime in here?
Mayor members, I was just going to add that we're actually hoping to hire people who have experience in outreach in addition to being a lawyer, for example, a person like me who did that before. But then also a paralegal, we're looking for a paralegal hybrid that has experience or a desire to do outreach work as well. So we're not looking at it as being a strictly legal job that first year because there won't be compliance. It'll be outreach and engagement and education, same for the support person as well. So we won't be totally taxing co-ed. We'll be looking to them to building on the types of work that they're already doing in the community.
Sure, great, thank you. Yeah, I, I'm, I think that Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Nelson has, has given you essentially my feelings on this whole topic. So Councilmember Carter's points are 100%. I don't want a single woman who had to flee her home to not be able to do that in a way that implies that, you know, she also has to lose her job on top of that, right? And I don't want to be in a situation where we, that we could have prevented that and we didn't, right? And so I, I really do feel that very strongly. And, and, you know, to, to the point about whether this should be a state or a federal thing, yes, 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 and yes again. Because it's, it's unfortunately true that there are people in our Senate right now actively making this not a thing. So it's unconscionable. I don't understand it. It's not a partisan thing to ask people to be able to care for themselves and their families. It's actually more cost-effective for them to stay home than to come in sick. We know this. This is data-driven. It's not even just the emotional piece. So on all of those counts, I'm 100% supportive of, of any earned sick and safe leave for folks. I, I will say, I still think that I'm with Councilmember Nelson on the number. It's not because I don't want them to have leave. I think just the burden of, of paid versus unpaid is hard for small businesses who, who got their loans to start their businesses with, with people who looked at their business plan and said, sure, you should underpay your workers and not give them leave and that's how you're going to make your profits. And, you know, now we're going to tell them that that's their fault, right? When what, what we have is a, as a system of financing for, for small businesses that don't have them building in living wages and don't have them building in the proper care and feeding of their employers. So I'm hoping that things with like our community development, small businesses initiative that we want to do on the east side, that we get folks in there who actually guide people to build living wages and earned sick and safe leave into their plans. And we don't help them get funded if they can't make money doing it. And that's how we should fix this in the going forwards. So I would take nine, I would take the six, I would take anything more than five. Because I don't think that being in compliance with Minneapolis is as nearly as important as making sure the 40% or so of businesses that have five or fewer, that if that's our number, can get through this next couple of years. We can always lower the number in the future. All right? So that'd be where I'm at. But other than that, I appreciate this a lot. The, the people involved in this have been unbelievably patient. And I, I, I know that, that we sound like a broken record up here sometimes continuing to ask for things. But to, to the task force, to the, the folks that talk to us, to the, the teams that met as small business owners and to the outreach team, thank you for all your work. It's, it's really, really good. Thank you.
Councilmember Loman and Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, in an effort to kind of move this forward, I've heard a couple of ideas. And I wonder if we ought not see if there is at least a second for a couple of ideas to just kind of move this to its conclusion. So I heard.
Now, we, we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if we could amend the motion. So we would, we would, we would vote this up or down if we could amend it. And these are a couple of ideas that I've heard. And so I know we already have a main motion.
Okay.
And so procedurally, what I'm asking to do is just get some clarity so we can kind of move forward on this. Because we could keep discussing this all night. But I think there's a, so I heard a recommendation around eliminating 365 days. And I can't remember if it was down to 120 days.
The original recommendation was 90 days, I believe. But I think we wanted to go a little bit longer than that. So in my mind, 120 would make sense.
Okay, so I don't know if there's a second for that, if we were to, to, to take a, take 365 and move it to 120. Okay, there's a second. Can we?
Hold on, we've got a procedural question.
So, I mean, I, I've made a motion here. So we can't, I mean, we're, we're not talking about.
Yeah, we're making a motion to amend, which was, is. Yep. We're making a motion to amend, which was, is totally within parliamentary procedure. And this is going to help us move quickly to an end of this here. So...
So, Councilmember Coulter moved the entire document here with a couple of changes. And now, Councilmember Lohman is proposing amending that, amending the motion. And that's all kosher, correct?
Mayor members, that is, that is acceptable. But I didn't, as a point of clarification, I did not hear a, a motion on the item that Councilmember Lohman is talking about right now.
How do I need to state it in order to be official motion?
Just move an amendment.
Just move it.
So, I'll move, I'll move an amendment to, to amend the main motion, which clearly states 365 days to 120 days. Second.
Motion and a second. Councilmember, or Ms. Manderschmidt, can you clarify that for us, so that the, so everybody understands what we're talking about?
Mayor members, I think it would be helpful to, to articulate where in the ordinance this is.
I would agree.
I have no idea. Somebody help me find it for...
Mr. Zuniga, can you help us here?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, it would be in Section 23.12, Clause D.
Can you say that again?
Section 23.12, Clause D.
And so, then I, I would read it as this, based on your motion. 23.12, Clause D says, "When there is a separation from employment and the employee is rehired within 365 days of separation by the same employer, previously accrued sick and safe time that has not been used or paid out, separation must be reinstated." That would then change to, "When there is separation from employment and the employee is rehired within 120 days of separation by the same employer, previously accrued sick and safe time that has not been used or paid out upon separation from employment must be reinstated." Everybody clear on that?
That's in time.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Nelson, on that proposed amendment to the motion that's on the table now. Any further discussion on this? No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two.
Mayor, I'd like to make another motion here.
Councilmember Lohman?
To move to amend the main motion. And I'll need some help from staff to figure out precisely where this is. There's the provision where we have, it's either six or five members.
Well, a point of clarification here, the, because I think to Councilmember Coulter's point, his main motion included to an amendment to this spot. So, I don't think we can amend the amendment to this spot, can we?
We certainly could.
Ms. Manderschmidt?
We didn't vote on his change yet before we are changing it again?
Yeah. I mean...
We can do that?
Yep. It'd be like wiping it out. Actually, I'll move to strike. I'll do that. I'll move, I mean, I can make this super complicated. I mean, I can...
No, I just want to make sure that...
It can be, certainly can be.
The other one certainly made sense to me. This one was just because it had already been amended as part of the motion.
And I think the, the purpose of what I'm trying to do here, Mayor, is just move this along. I think we've got, I think we've got some, some questions here. And I think we've got a, a council member who would like to see if we can increase the number of, of employees that are, that's, that wouldn't be covered by this. I'm not supportive of this. And I intend to vote no. But I think we should let folks be able to get this, we can get this move forward. So...
So, your motion is to...
So, the motion would be, and I think that, I'd need a little help from staff here, precisely where it is. I think it's that, that section where we're going from six to five.
23.07 G and H.
Okay. Very good. Page 135.
And I think the recommendation was to, that I heard was from, from the mall for 15. Is there a second for that?
Mayor and members, just a point of a clarification. Right now, the ordinance says six. And what I hear Councilmember Lohman suggesting is changing six to 15.
That's correct.
In all spots where it says six, in G and H.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Nelson. Does everybody understand what we're doing here? In G and H, where we changed from, from six or more, we changed that to five, based on the motion that Councilmember Coulter made. This would change that from five to 15. Councilmember Nelson, question?
No, just a quick comment on the motion, the amendment, the motion. This still would allow people to take that time off. That they would still be covered by earned sick and safe time. It's just a matter of whether or not the employer would pay or not. So, for that reason, I would support it. They're still covered by the earned sick and safe time.
All right. So, the motion on the table is to change that number, in, in G and H, to change the number six to the number, to 15, 15 or more employees. Any further questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails, I believe, two to five. All right?
That's right.
Council, additional questions here? Councilmember DeLisandro, were you next in line, or?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
Or no, I'm sorry, Councilmember Martin. I was losing track of my, my speaking.
Councilmember Lohman beat me to it. I'm good to go.
Okay. Councilmember Coulter?
Mayor, I want to take a second to let my blood, blood pressure come down a little bit here. I, I don't want to, I'm kind of framing this as sort of closing comments here, so I don't want to step on anyone if anyone else has any further questions or comments or anything. I'm not seeing anyone metaphorically or physically jump up, so that's okay. So, first of all, I just want to start off by saying that I'm, I'm really grateful that we are here, finally. I really sincerely want to express my appreciation and thanks to our staff, to our Assistant City Manager Mike Sable, Peter Zuniga with our legal department, Kate Ebert with our public health department, our racial equity coordinator, Faith Jackson, Tracy Smith with community outreach and engagement. This was a lot of work to do, and challenging even under the best of circumstances, which we have decidedly not been under for most of the last two years. And I do also want to thank our task force members who worked so diligently with staff to, I think, bring together the best pieces of existing ordinances, and even strike out on our own when called for. And I think we have put together a strong ordinance that is going to serve our community well. And finally, I just, I want to thank the businesses and workers who contributed to this effort. I know that there are those out there who don't support this, and don't think we should do this. But I really do appreciate that there was a good faith effort to address concerns and get to something that will work. And that is increasingly uncommon these days. So, I do want to acknowledge that and appreciate that. I'm really pleased with what has come forward. And I think the work that has been done will lay an excellent foundation for other conversations that need to happen around support for workers in Bloomington. And I think, to Councilmember Lohman's point earlier, we have a real opportunity to build on this work, to address other issues that we know are out there. I know others have raised issues of wage theft, and a prevailing wage ordinance, and other things like that. And I'm excited to get to that work. And to be specific about it, I do want to encourage staff to find a way to keep everyone, workers, businesses, advocates, community members, involved in these conversations on a regular and ideally ongoing basis. So, I suspect everyone in this room, and probably most everyone watching at home, knows where I stand on this. We have talked about this a lot of times, and we've talked about it for a long time. I believe this is something we should do, since even before COVID reminded us how critical it is that everyone, everyone be able to take time off to care for themselves and their families. And it is important that all of us have that ability. Ensuring that workers can take time off for illness or family safety helps to reduce the spread of contagious illnesses. It increases worker productivity and reduces turnover, and it promotes community stability. By making it easier for folks who work in Bloomington to live in Bloomington, we strengthen our own community. And it's also worth mentioning, as others already have, that if we are, if we want to address some of the most serious crime, we know that much of it comes from domestic abuse. And we also know that victims very often aren't able to leave these situations because of a lack of knowledge or access to safety and support, and a lack of an, of economic agency to leave. And, you know, finally, I would say it's easy, I think, for us to focus on caring for children. But we need to acknowledge the fact as well, that as we continue to age as a community and a region, this matters for caring for seniors as well. Now, I've heard from a lot of folks who simply don't support the ordinance, who think that it would be harmful to business. And as, as, as has been noted, there is a particular concern about small business owners. And I get it. I think it's worth remembering, though, that across businesses of all sizes, and this is according to businesses themselves, this is information they directly submit to the Department of Labor, the cost of providing earned sick and safe leave is less than 1% of payroll costs, in total, like, less than something like a third of a percent of total costs. And I understand that there are a lot of thoughts, and there's a lot of planning and budgeting involved for a business, and I get what needs to be considered. But I think we need to keep that reality in mind, too. And I, I think it's also worth remembering, I've seen the emails that, that folks have, have raised with this issue, that this ordinance would not require a new benefit as long as existing benefits meet these standards. You don't have to call it sick time. You can call it PTO. You can call it vacation time or time off. You can call it Tim Bussi's Magical Mystery Tour, for all I care, as long as it lets workers take their earned time. And, you know, others have made this point as well, that, that there are folks saying, is this the city's role? And it's, it's often, you know, as others have said, that, it's not that I don't support earned sick and safe leave. Most of the time, they don't. I just think that it would be done better by the state or federal government. And, you know, as the mayor said earlier, honestly, my answer is, yeah, me too. I'd absolutely prefer that the legislature or Congress do this. But they haven't. And I also know that there are workers here in Bloomington, many of whom who have worked through the COVID frontlines, who simply cannot, and I believe should not, be told, you can wait, or someone else can do it. And as the mayor mentioned, Bloomington in particular has a long history of leading on local public health issues like this. It's one of the reasons I continue to be grateful that we have our own local public health department. I see this very much in that tradition. So, why have I been beating this particular drum for two and a half years? Well, like most things in my life, it mostly revolves around my kids. I became a parent less than a year into my time on the council. And then, again, as I was running for reelection, which is not a timing I would recommend, by the way. And the thing that surprised me most about becoming a parent was just how much of yourself you have to give to another person. How much of yourself is required to care for someone else. I am grateful that I have a job that's allowed me to do that. But we know that for many who work here in Bloomington, that's not the case. I cannot imagine the pain of being a parent on the other end of the phone, telling their kid in the school nurse's office, "I'm sorry, I can't pick you up," or "I might lose my job." Or of someone lying in bed at night, worried about choosing between their life and their livelihood. It's incredible, really, the number of ways in which the ability to care undergirds our own lives. It enables commerce and business, and it really stabilizes and empowers our community. And as we think about the kind of community we want to be, we need to be clear about the fact that the ability to care for children, for seniors, for our families, is going to ultimately be at the center of a lot of conversations. And it's an issue that we're simply going to have to continue working on and keep talking about. So, Mayor, we, we've made the motion. I'm not going to call, move to call the question. But I think it's time to vote.
Councilmember Carter, you look like you're, oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted to say something. Anybody else like to chime in? Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just quickly, this one has been difficult for me. I absolutely support people's right to take time off if they're sick, take care of a parent, take care of a kid, if they're in a domestic abuse situation, need to get the help that they, and resources they need, absolutely. I personally don't particularly care for this ordinance. I think it's overly complicated. I, I think, you know, the logistics of it as a small business owner of trying to implement it are extremely difficult. I actually went into my payroll system to try to figure this out, how I would do it for just one community, when you have people working in different communities, and frankly, couldn't figure it out. Fortunately, not an issue at my company. I offer it no matter what, and have for a long time. And, and, because I believe that this is an appropriate thing to offer people, that they shouldn't be forced to work in that situation. And part of me thinks that this is like, we copied some older ordinances, and it's like a 2019 ordinance that doesn't deal with all the realities of 2022, of how things have changed, of how workforces have changed, and things like that. But the end of the day, this is the ordinance in front of us, and people absolutely should be able to take that time off. And, you know, like the mayor said, I may think, I may have written it differently. I'll reluctantly support it, because I, I think they should have that opportunity to, to take that time when they need it. It's not the ordinance I like, and, and it's no discredit to the, the people who served, staff and task force. I just think some of the big questions haven't been dealt with, and appreciate the city manager's comments, that, that's what the next year is for. And I think we will get through those. I just, this, this one's, it, I just don't like ordinances that are this complicated for, you know, for compliance. And so, the other change I just want to highlight for people that I think, Peter, we've talked about before, is just the enforcement. I think Councilmember DeLisandro's brought this up as well, that, you know, we're going to focus on education first, before we get into punitive measures. And, you know, if you're egregiously violating this, at some point, you, we will do that. But we want, we want people to be able to get the benefit that they're supposed to get, and, and not try to do this in a punitive way to businesses. So, so, those are my thoughts.
Not as eloquent as Councilmember Carter, or Coulter, sorry.
Thank you.
Or Carter.
Thank you.
Foot and mouth. Counsel, unless there are others who'd like to chime in, we have a motion and a second on the table. And we understand what we're voting on, right? Everybody's cool with that. Here, no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I'd like to echo my thanks to the staff, to the task force, again, to the staff. The task force, again. Everybody who chimed in and brought forth information on this and perspective on this, I think, I appreciate the work that went into this and into the position that we ended up with. So, thank you also very much. Councilmember Coulter, I believe we need summary publication on this as well.
Forget about the important things. Mayor, I will move to adopt a resolution directing, directing summary publication of an ordinance adding Chapter 23 of the city code, establishing earned sick and safe leave in the city of Bloomington.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Lohman for summary publication. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And at 5.2 on our agenda are the 2022 Cultural Arts Support Grants Funding Recommendations. And we have with us tonight the manager of our Bloomington Center for the Arts, Leah Hughes, is going to bring this forward. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I just give you a nod, and I want you to, okay. All right. Well, I'm Leah Hughes. I'm the manager of the Center for the Arts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for allowing me to present to you tonight. This is for the 2022 Cultural Arts Support Grant Program.
Excuse me.
Can you pull the microphone just a little closer, Leah? Thank you.
That's what I was going to say.
Is that better? Okay. All right. Thank you. For those of you who aren't familiar with the program, I'll just give you a very brief kind of history of the purpose. Ultimately, these funds are to support nonprofits, arts and culture organizations who are headquartered in Bloomington, or do the lion's share of their work in Bloomington, therefore benefiting the Bloomington community. It's also to help these organizations cultivate partnerships and collaborations, and ultimately make Bloomington a destination place to either work, entertain yourself, or live. Next slide, please. The city in some form or another has been using these cultural support grant funds to support our nonprofit and arts and culture organizations since 1960s and 1970s for some of them. Between 1994 and 2010, an organization called the Bloomington Fine Arts Council was the main distribution vehicle for these funds. And essentially, they, they distributed the funds to the member organizations at that time. In 2011, the process was changed to an application process with a review panel. And since 2011, over $1,378,000 have been distributed. And then, nearly 560,000 people have been impacted by these funds. Mike, next slide. Up until 2019, funding priorities for the cultural arts support grants have been primarily given to the resident arts groups that hold leases here with the city. Since 2020, next slide, please, Mike, we did change some of the eligibility requirements to make this program more accessible to groups that aren't necessarily lease-holding entities within the city of Bloomington. We changed... We changed application, word counts, we expanded questions, we added diversity, equity, inclusion, parts of the grant, and then we have an engagement section that greatly asks the applicants to, to better expand on the efforts that they have within the community to reach different demographic areas, expand programmings and collaborations, and also to, to just really reiterate the expectations and the involvement within the community of Bloomington. Next slide, please. We also made changes to marketing to make sure that the public was more aware of this program and the opportunities within. Mainly, a lot of cross-departmental collaborations have been happening, so I've been working closely with Creative Placemaking, the co-ed division. A lot of social media platforms and websites and networking has been done within different city departments to make sure that the, the community as a whole, arts organizations and artists within the, within the community are more aware of this program and the opportunities that are within. In addition, there's been a lot of direct email and marketing to different artist groups that are affiliated with Bloomington, neighboring city networks, and things of that nature. Next slide, please. The 2022 review panel consisted of six people, or six, six people, Alejandra Palanca from Creative Placemaking, Mark Morrison from Parks and Recreation, and then some community members at large, Blaine Kelly, who works for Oasis Youth and is a performing artist himself, and then Karen Powers, a retired music teacher with Bloomington Public Schools. And then there were two park commissioners who are on the review panel this year, Andy Hoffman and Lance Schur. Next slide. There were eight applicants, seven of which were the resident arts groups, again, who hold leases who have historically been funded by this program. But we did have an additional new partner who applied this year. Concerto Dance by Jolene Conkle. Jolene Conkle is a Bloomington resident and an artist, performing artist herself. She applied on behalf of a newly formed arts organization called Concerto Dance. Next slide, please. Seven of the eight applicants were recommended for funding by this year's review panel. Angelica Cantanti, Artistry Bloomington Corral, Bloomington Symphony Orchestra, Continental Ballet Company, Metalist Concert Band, and Notable Singers. Unfortunately, Concerto Dance was not recommended for funding this year, mainly due to a number of factors. Unfortunately, Jolene Conkle tried to launch her nonprofit in 2019, right before the pandemic hit, and so she really didn't have any opportunity for any sort of performances or collaborations or programming for the last two years, essentially. She had a lot of merit to her application and a lot of really great ideas, but there wasn't really any evidence, unfortunately, of community engagement, partnership, or even performances within the community. So the review panel was very supportive of Concerto Dance and Jolene Conkle. They just didn't feel that they could justify funding at this point, and made the recommendation that she get a little bit more experienced time and opportunity to, to just engage with the Bloomington community under her belt before. So they encouraged her to reapply in future years, but for this year, they, they did hold back on funding. Next slide, please. Again, some things that we're just working on with the program, obviously with, with the change in community, the change in climate, the pandemic has impacted a lot. We're just really trying to build relationships within the community just through partnerships, city staff helping me promote this program, and just getting to know different artists and arts organizations in the community, in addition to using and leveraging the resident arts groups who have great history in this community, great programs and great connections, too, to find interesting and unique partnerships that can be cultivated and supported through this program in the future. Next slide. So the action that I'm requesting for our city council tonight is to approve the 2022 Cultural Arts Support Program recommendations as the review panel has listed in this slide.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your final comments here when you're talking about the building the relationships and the partnerships and building off of the outstanding roots that our community arts organizations already have and the connections that they have to try and reach deeper into this community, because you know the arts are there, you know they're, the artistic expression is there, it's just waiting to come out and looking for opportunities to come out. I'm, I'm glad to hear Concerto Dance came forward. Certainly understand why it didn't quite make it this year, but I hope they continue to work and can continue to come forward with, with a product that we can ultimately fund, and hope that many more Concerto Dance companies come forward from the city of Bloomington.
Yes, yeah, Mr. Mayor, we did have a lot of phone calls. There are a lot of artists who are interested, so I'd say a half dozen other artists or artist groups did call on behalf of this program. So the word is definitely getting out. The city staff and the city departments who have been helping with that have been doing a great job. It's just finding that right fit, finding that Bloomington connection, because these are really dollars that are meant to impact the community and go back into the community. And so helping kind of massage these, these proposed programs and introducing them to the other resident arts groups, so there can be those collaborations that can bring new, new people, and it's definitely happening. They're working really hard, and it's really fun to see this start to evolve as we, we work with the community.
I'm, I'm very glad to hear all that you just said there, so very good. Questions? Councilmember Colter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a sort of a quick follow-up to the, the point on, on Concerto Dance. Was there any consideration? I mean, I, I see, I saw, I see that, I mean, every, every organization that, that applied is getting 100% of their funding, and
They are.
That's great. I'm glad, I'm glad we have the resources to do that. Was there any consideration even to sort of a partial funding or, or something along those lines?
Councilmember Colter, there was actually a really lengthy discussion. People really, really wanted to fund them, I will tell you that. It's just, in the end, just really looking at, you know, all the checked boxes and just seeing where they, they fell, there just wasn't enough evidence to justify, at least at this time. I am working with Jolene and Concerto, they are actually performing here in our space, actually, in two weeks' time. So y'all can come support them by buying tickets if you'd like. I would love that. So we are trying to get them into the fold, just because it is a Bloomington resident, it is a new arts organization that is trying to make their way, and just really trying to bring them into kind of the Bloomington arts community fold here is really kind of the first step. There's money left over in this fund. There was a lot of discussion with the review committee on what we could do with those funds, so some of those comments have been, you know, maybe looking at other artists or other new organizations within the community and using those, those dollars that are not being used to support them, you know, free concerts, things like that, just to start introducing them to the Bloomington community and provide access to what they're offering as best we can. So there are some opportunities to bring some of these other folks into the fold with the remaining dollars that are not being allocated through the award.
Wonderful, thank you. And you did a thing they tell you not to do, and you anticipated my next question, which was about how you plan to use the, the other funds, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro, and then Councilmember
Thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Just some new, new council member question. Hopefully, it'll be soon that I won't ask those anymore. How, how does the money for the, the fund that you're using to stat, to award these grants, how is that funded?
It's, it's in my budget. It's just something that's been allocated through, I believe, the general fund.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct. It's a, it's inclusion in the general fund budget for the year.
Is it a, is it a percentage of something, or is it a flat number each year? Like, how does the budget get allocated?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the number has largely remained unchanged for the last couple of years, and that's just a policy decision about how much to allocate. The only, the only thing that would, I, I think there's strong interest in supporting the arts. We've had a tough couple of years financially, and so that's part of the reason why we haven't tried to continue to escalate the support we're giving. At the same time, because there is a percentage of budget that we can allocate, it, we may get to a point where we fund it more than can be supported through the policy, right, Leah?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's just, that, that can be a future conversation if the council is interested in providing more, and if there are more organizations that are looking to participate here and are worthy of the investment, that might be the, the differentiator in terms of looking at more inclusion in the general fund budget.
Thank you.
Councilmember Loman and Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Loman.
You can do this as long or as, as short as you want. So I, I'm just curious about, you know, as we go through an evaluation process and of these organizations, and I just want to look, you know, primarily at the administration piece. You've got those three categories there, and I'm just wondering, you know, how is that done? And what is the confidence level when you look at, for example, let's just take the first one here, fiscal stability, you know, of these organizations? And have we had anybody over time that has not made it to the end of the year? And how, how have we handled that, that type of thing? I'm just, just, you know, if you don't know the answer, don't worry about it. I'm just, I'm just curious about how that whole area operates and, and runs, and how confident we are in the processes that we have.
So Councilmember Loman, part of the application is they have to submit quite a bit of their, their financial documentation, so their, their previous year's annual budget, they have to submit, you know, expense reports, you know, things like that. And so basically, we're reviewing their last year's documentation in addition to what they're saying that their, their current financial status is and what they intend to use the dollars for. I will also say that the review panel are all individuals who are, are quite savvy, not only within arts and cultural entities in Bloomington, but also, you know, some of them are business owners, so they know how to look at a spreadsheet and, and read the numbers. And so, to my knowledge, I've never known of anyone who did not financially be able to cover the costs or, or financially do what they said they were going to do with these dollars. They've all been very, very sound, and they do also have to submit a report before they can reapply. So they also submit financial reports as a part of the end of the grant cycle, so that way we can see, well, you said you were going to do this, is this in fact what you did? And I've never seen anyone not actually follow through with what they applied for.
And I think that's, I think that's really important. You know, I think when folks look at arts, and it, it's an incredibly important part of the future of Bloomington, and, and, you know, historic part of the past. I mean, you just look at the, you know, the, we, we sit here in the arts center, civic area, and so just wanted to, you know, that we are responsible with those dollars. We are looking into those funds. We're not just, you know, taking tax dollars and just doling out there and not looking to see what the responsibility, and then also at the end, as you mentioned, you know, looking to see what they've done at the end. So again, just appreciate the work that, that you're doing, and especially around that area.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
Mine is a very simple question, building off of Councilmember DeLisandro's questions. I'm just curious, when did this, when did the Cultural Arts Support Program get approved? And how, so how long have we been doing this?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, I actually don't know the specific date, but I believe it goes back more than 20 years. I think that we've had these in place since the Center for the Performing Arts has opened here at Civic Plaza, and even further back, back when the Bloomington Fine Arts Council was in existence, and we worked through the BFAC to do that.
So it's my understanding that the Bloomington Fine Arts Council used to be the entity that the, the city council allocated the dollars to, and then they administered these funds throughout their membership, kind of like a, almost like a regional arts council, if you will, how they, they receive a chunk of money, and then they figure out what, what groups and what organizations those funds will go to. It just reached a point where it was, I think, more common, or, or more checks and balance to have it run through an application process, and that's why that change was made, is my understanding, and I believe 2011.
The process from BFAC changed about 12, 13 years ago.
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and actually, I remember the conversation in 2011 about the application process being implemented, so, yes, it's about when it started becoming a little bit more formalized. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Sorry, I, now I'm going to follow up on your question, because you, you piqued my interest on another question. Are the, are the, thanks for your patience. Are the, are these generally operating grants? Meaning like, do they come and say, hey, without your dollars, we couldn't actually be a thing? Or do they build in specific programs and say, with these dollars, we're going to do X, Y, and Z?
It actually varies by applicant, so some of them definitely use these dollars for general op, whereas others use them to, to subsidize their education programs. There's a fair number of organizations who have education programs and partnerships with, with different youth entities within the community. And so some of them do use these dollars to, to subsidize scholarships or free programming in the community. So it really just depends on the organization and what sort of programs they have within that organization, because that generally guides how they allocate it and how they use it. So it's not all general operating funds. Some of them are used to just support programming or different initiatives they have within the Bloomington community.
A quick follow-up, if I may, Mayor. And so the, the criteria doesn't require one or the other or some combination, it's a fairly open, I was just looking at the, the actual online, it's quite extensive if you haven't gone out there, it's quite a lot of documentation they require.
Some of these grants are 97 pages long.
Yeah, I could, I could see why. The, so from an evaluation perspective, do you, is there some mix that you're trying to do with the choices that you're making in terms of who, who might get it and who might not? How many are new or need operating dollars versus how many might be expanding programming or anything like that? What is generally the thought process there?
So generally, the thought process isn't so much, you know, trying to balance who's using it for general, general op and who's using it for program. It's really just reading through the applications and seeing who has the strongest proposal and the best idea as to how they're going to use these funds. And then, you know, more importantly, or equally as importantly, how are you going to assess success within your programs or within your, your, you know, contribution or impacts that you, you laid out? So it's really just who has the best application, who seems to be trying to make the most impact, who has the biggest, you know, impact on the Bloomington community, and how are they doing that in really unique and creative ways? A lot of the, the groups that I've been in conversation with, especially the last two years, because, you know, the venue was shuttered for a year, and then it was open and closed for a while there, they've had a lot of time to sit back and reflect and really think about who they are and what they do and why they do it. And that really came through in the applications for this. You could tell that they've had a pause and that they've had time to think about what they're doing, why they're doing it, and how they're doing it. The other thing I saw in a lot of the applications is they've been hiring consultations or consultants to come in and talk about, you know, what does it mean to be an equitable, accessible organization? How do you do that within the programming and the staffing that you have? And so that was, for me, who's been reading these for a while, and frankly, for, I was someone who used to write these to you guys for a long time, seeing those changes was really fantastic. And really, the review panel made quite a few comments on just, wow, they're really working hard in really trying times. And so I have to just, you know, give them a lot of credit. It's been a tough two years. They're all still here, they're all still doing great things, and they're all impacting the community, frankly, now in more ways than they were before, because now they have to do it virtually. You can't do it face to face. You had to figure out how to be creative, and they had to collaborate, because I'm doing it this way, but it seems like you're doing it better that way. And so that really came forward in the applications. And so it's not really so much a balance between general op and programming and what the different buckets are that the money's being dropped into. It's really who's doing the best for the community with what they've got, and how are we supporting them through this program as best we can, so they can continue doing
Counsel, any additional questions? If not, it sounds to me like we're at the point of a motion. Councilmember DeLisandro.
I'd be thrilled to make the motion to approve the 2022 Cultural Arts Support Program Recommendation for Funding as specified in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Loman, to approve the 2022 Cultural Arts Support Program Recommendations for Funding. Hearing no further council discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for another strong process. Looking forward to, as I mentioned earlier, the, the, the additional arts programming, in addition to the outstanding programming that we always, already have here in Bloomington. Looking forward to that coming forward, so.
Thank you. And thank you all for showing up. I see a lot of you at our program, so it's really wonderful, the support you guys have.
I was going to say, fantastic job on Friday night. That was a lot of fun.
Thank you, that was a great party.
Great program, absolutely.
Thank you.
Council, we'll move to item 5.3 on our agenda, the Council Policy and Issue Update. Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I don't have anything specific, but happy to respond to any questions that members have.
Any questions of Mr. Verbrugge tonight? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Knew I was coming from our listening session today. Thank you. First off, I wanted to say happy pride to all my LGBTQ allies out there. I love this month. It makes me very happy to be up here as your representative from our queer community in Bloomington, so thank you for that honor. I went to Highland Greens on Sunday and had a great time at their reopening. I think the most interesting thing I can bring back, aside from the fact that I had a really good time and my putting game is still awful, is that the, the comments I was getting from folks were, you know, a bit, I was here five years ago and I'm back, and boy, does the course look great, and how great is Three Rivers doing and all this? I think it shows the strength of the, the decision that, you know, I didn't make, because I wasn't here at the time, but that you all made to, to partner with Three Rivers on that project. to, um, to partner with, uh, Three Rivers on that project. And so great kudos to the staff there. John and his team are doing a great job, uh, and people seem to have a great time. So I was really happy to be able to go out there for a little while. Um, and then I did want to bring up, so, um, uh, as, as you all heard from one of my constituents this after, or this evening at our listening session, I do want to consider us to try to, um, look into whether or not we can, um, make the accommodations that we need to, to make all street legal RVs, um, accessible, uh, to, to residents here, um, and don't put some arbitrary requirement on them. If they're street legal in Minnesota, we should probably accommodate them in terms of being able to, um, uh, have them at their home for purposes of, of what, uh, we heard this morning. Not, not, uh, if it's just a quick, you know, miscellaneous update or something at some point, that would be ideal, obviously, because we don't necessarily wanna open up that can of worms. I respect that. Um, but I would like to see us if we, if we could. Is there any reason why any of you would not be willing to, um, to have us take a look at that? Or Mr. Mayor, I know that you have the longest tenure of discomfort with the fact that this conversation keeps happening. Um, and so I respect that. I, but I, this one seemed really banal to me in the scheme of things.
I, I would agree, councilmember. I, yes, I've been fighting this battle now for a long while and, uh, we all have. And, and I would agree, yes, to use the argument of whether or not it's street legal doesn't quite work because we're not talking about street legality. We're talking about appropriateness in a, in a neighborhood. I mean, a, a semi truck is also street legal. We don't want that parked in front of someone's house or in their driveway for any period of time. So, uh, I, I am, like I said earlier, I am hesitant to bring this out again, just because we settled on 40 feet. If we go to 45 feet, do we go to 50 feet? It's kind of along the line. Do we do five employees, six employees, 15 employees? I mean, at some point you gotta, you, you come up with a number and, and that's what we had done over three years when we discussed all of this. So, uh, that, that's my point of view. Others may see it differently. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, and, and kind of along those lines, then all of a sudden it got into snowmobiles on trailers and all these things that we call RVs. But I, I guess just going back to the last time we were in study sessions, way on the other side of the building, I think we had a rough breakdown of how many RVs we had permits for way back at different lengths. So even just to stick that into a one weekly and say, okay, really, how many are we talking about as of that data four years ago? I'd find that information interesting.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if I, if I can, Councilmember DeLisandro, it would help me to understand what specific change are we talking about? I mean, are we, are we, are we saying as long as, is, is the idea, as long as something is street legal in the state of Minnesota, it should be able to be kept year round, 24/7 in some driveway or?
Right. So, um, I can have that conversation at another time, many, many years from now. That's fine. Lona's opinion on, on what we should be doing here is very different from what is currently in place. And so as a result, we're not gonna open that can of worms. I literally mean that. The ask is, the ask is, um, that we look at whether or not we can go from 40 to 45 feet on the specific provision for, I believe it's the 72 hours every seven days. And it's just because, um, in the summertime, as most people are using their RVs and things like that, there's issues of, you know, cleaning it out, making it ready for the trip and so on and so forth. And right now I believe there's a six hour limit on anything over that 40 feet. And that's, that's the ask. So very, very minimal, not Lona's Pollyanna kind of view of the world.
And I, I.
Appreciate the question.
I, yeah, no, thank you. That's a, that's a helpful clarification. And I, um, I think to my mind, I would challenge the mayor while I certainly haven't been involved in the, the conversation as long as he have. I'm willing to put up my level of antipathy toward this conversation against yours. Um, I, I think it is, it, I, if it is a, if it truly is a, a small technical correction, in, in particular, because this can, this resident raised the issue of whether or not this was, that was the original intention when we last had this discussion, that, that to me is a bit of a distinction. If that was the original intention and it just simply, for whatever reason, didn't make it into the final ordinance, that's a different question to me. I think I would need a little more information about what that conversation would entail. Um, because again, I'm, I am, I am hesitant to reopen the conversation, partly frankly, because I'm just sick of having the conversation, but also partly because we, I mean, we came to a decision not all that long ago, just within these last few years. And I'm generally of the opinion that we, there should be more time to really evaluate if, if it's working for the broader community, if it's, if it's something that makes a big difference to the community before we decide to come back and reevaluate something like that. So I, I'm, I'm pretty undecided about whether or not I want to engage in that conversation. But I would need to know a little bit more about the, sort of the.
No, I think you're, I think the ask is fair. And I, and, and so if, if, if City Manager Verbrugge.
You were gonna finish with that.
If you can, if you can, uh, you know, if, if we can get at least the, the, the feedback from what transpired. And so we have some understanding of that. I, I can only give you anecdotal. So we have the, the resident today and I know that the person that lives behind me moved out of Bloomington because of how frustrated they were with our ordinance on RVs. So, you know, again, we aren't always data-driven here. Uh, it sounds like in this particular case, we really want to be and that's awesome. I'm gonna support that for sure. Um, and, uh, and so yes, any, any information you could provide would be great. It's a good first start. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, um, heard Councilmember Martin's request, so we'll find that. We'll see what we can do for producing some of the, reproducing some of the planning commission process. Um, I, I know that our guest from listening session is still here and has patiently been awaiting additional conversation here this evening. Uh, you know, the term street legal, some, has been used a couple of times and I, I also get concerned about that. I don't know what the maximum length of a recreational vehicle is that is produced or whether that is permissible to drive on Minnesota streets. So I do get a little concerned, uh, similar to what the mayor said, that, you know, if we go to 45, then somebody who has a 48-foot RV will come in and, and ask to go to 50. There is, trying to find some statute here, uh, a recreational vehicle combination limit in state law that is 70 feet. So if you put a trailer on the back of your RV, um, that can't exceed 70 feet. I don't recall what our RV language says about trailers being attached as well or combinations. But in many Bloomington neighborhoods, that would exceed the front footage of, uh, some of the properties. And it certainly would exceed the front footage if a driveway, uh, is part of that property. And my recollection is that 40 feet, um, also was sort of the maximum of a driveway for many homes in Bloomington. And so the ability to have the prop, have the vehicle on the individual property rather than in the right of way was a consideration as well. So these are just some of the things we'll want to bring back. We'll put together information. If you give us a couple of weeks, we'll put it into a one weekly and council can look at it and then maybe bring it up at a subsequent meeting, whether you want to pursue it at that point.
Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I guess I, this is gonna be, this is a tough topic to bring up, but, um, I wanted to just bring up the issue around gun violence in our communities across the country and, and Bloomington as well. And, um, I was trying to find the presentation that Chief Hartley gave us the last time, um, he did kind of a crime update, um, in Bloomington. And I'm not sure I found the right statistic, but I think it might be, um, there was one around weapons and he talked about the huge, the significant increase that we've seen in the confiscation of illegal guns. Um, and so I guess I'm just curious. I know he's gonna be doing an update again, or sorry, Chief Hodges is gonna be doing an update again for the council, um, relatively soon. And in that update, I'd be curious, because I think we did see a 245% increase in 2021 compared to our five-year average. What are we doing in Bloomington to reduce the risk of gun violence, including confiscating of, the confiscation of illegal guns on our streets? Um, I know we have two policy priorities on our legislative agenda, I think, too, the red flag law and background checks. I know that our police officers are doing a ton of great work. And so I'd be curious to know what are we doing and are there opportunities, especially from like a public health perspective, that we could be doing, doing more? I know this is a huge issue, but I feel like it's an issue that we need to know more about. And, and at least in my time on council, we haven't talked about gun violence specifically. And I know it's on everybody's mind. So, um, I'm not advocating for a specific policy per se at all at this point. Um, but I'd just like to learn more about, you know, what we're dealing with in Bloomington. Um, specifically, are those numbers still the numbers that we see in 2022 compared to 2021? Um, and then again, you know, what are the things that we're doing? What kind of partnerships do we have, um, to help prevent, uh, gun violence and so?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, let me just look up and down and see if that's, uh, an item of interest in the presentation that's upcoming with police. I suspected that might be the case. So, uh, the chief and I will work on including, uh, some information about that. I, it's interesting, the timing of your question, Councilmember Carter. At our Rotary meeting today, I had a Rotaryian come up to me and say, what is, what is the city doing about gun violence? And, and, uh, my, my answer wasn't a great answer. It was, you know, we're not throwing our hands up, but we're kind of throwing our hands up, right? Because there's so much, you know, limitation on any regulation and, and the sensitivity around it. Our schools do, um, regular tabletop planning. Uh, our schools and the Bloomington Police Department have a good working relationship together. Uh, I know that schools are at the top of mind for many people when it comes to gun violence right now, but I think that, uh, none of us, uh, feel that that is the limit of what we should be talking about when it comes to gun violence. You know, how, how gun violence, uh, factors into domestic violence and other places is extremely important. We have seen, uh, to your point, some illegal or new kinds of guns that we are discovering. Uh, those, those things are alarming as well. So I appreciate the question. We'll provide some information.
Uh, and I will say, Councilmember, I, I also appreciate the timing of your question because, uh, US Conference of Mayors is meeting this week in Reno and they had a press conference just today, basically to express their frustration with the inability of cities to be able to do anything. That there is so little that cities can actually do from a policy or a, an enforcement standpoint. It's just so limited based on so many different factors that unfortunately, yes, a lot of times it's throw your hands up and say, we need to do something in either the state or the national level. So it's, um, it, it's certainly a timely topic, but I do think it's a worthwhile one to have here. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. You, you hit on pretty much the point that I was about to make because in fact, at a, after a previous mass shooting, I reached out to our city attorney to ask this very question. And the, the preemption in state law for cities against really any kind of firearm regulation is, is really pretty strict. And that's, that's frustrating and it's unfortunate. And, um, one of the reasons that I'm generally not a big fan of state preemption of local action is just that problem, is that we end up seeing a real issue that, that there is, is momentum and desire to take action on and we, we can't do anything. So it's, it's really just frustrating in a lot of different ways.
Councilmember Loman, new topic or continuation?
Um, well, actually I'm going back to RVs.
Oh, back to RVs, okay.
That's when I raised my hand. So, um, and I had, I have two other ones that I want to talk about too, but, uh, I, I was just gonna say this. Um, I think if you look at 45, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna open this whole thing up again. I mean, I, I mean, I don't want to say that, but I think the reality is, is that, uh, you know, we do have a new council member who wasn't really a part of that, those conversations. And I, I, I think it, we're gonna find ourselves opening the whole thing up. And so, and I'm not saying one way or the other where we should go. I, I think we maybe shouldn't go there, but, uh, but if, I think if you feel strongly, um, uh, Councilmember DeLisandro. Okay. Um, I'm not sure if you, Mayor, you want me to cover the other items here?
Please.
And then, um, you know, to, uh, the last topic that we just talked about, I wonder if it does make sense, uh, we're talking a little about gun violence. Makes sense maybe to have a meeting with our schools, uh, check in with them, uh, see how they're doing. Get that, uh, school board and city council meeting, uh, uh, together at some point here. Um, I just think it may be timely. Moving on, um, uh, there is some, uh, I know that we have, uh, helped on a number of occasions, and this is more to, to you, City Manager, with, uh, flag placement in the cemeteries. And it, it comes up every year. And I know for a number of years, we had COVID, so it was impossible to kind of do it. And prior to that, we had kind of worked to, um, uh, try to get volunteers to help out. And we've got our staff, you know, and it's one of the things I wrote back to, uh, some of our residents. We're, we're working on so many different things. We've got the, uh, you know, our, our monument that we're trying to put out here. Uh, we've been recommending, uh, or recognizing, uh, different, uh, we had a ceremony, I think it was, uh, just last week here, for folks. And so we're kind of stretched thin from a staffing standpoint. And so I don't know if there's a way to kind of help get that volunteering piece going again. If there's, uh, any way from a staffing point, but at some point folks are starting to think that, you know, we kind of own that project and we, we haven't really traditionally ever really owned that project. We've been able to be at the table. And so I just wanted to, to kind of make that, make that comment so that, uh, that folks understand that that's not something we have done as a, as a city, uh, activity. It's something we've been alongside with. And if we're going to, uh, do that, then I think we need to kind of, um, you know, maybe formalize that a little bit more or figure out how we're gonna move forward with that. And we're not gonna solve it today, but I wanted to at least bring that forward, that we needed to have a conversation about that.
Mr. Verbrugge.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, thank you for raising the issue. Uh, correct, we stepped in a couple of years ago to help fill the gap, uh, during COVID. And, um, I, I think that to the earlier conversation about work plans for co-ed or others, uh, and, you know, what we want to prioritize and what we can reasonably do is a good discussion. Um, is, is we also look at having, um, co-ed or other places in our city act as, uh, some sort of volunteer coordinator. Um, you know, that's, that's something we can do, but we don't currently have somebody in that specific role today. I think that's one thing that, um, we'd, we'd probably be interested in taking a look at. We've heard it from a number of places that that's something that, um, might have interest. But it's just gonna be in the mix with a lot of other requests too. So.
Council, anything else? Well, we got rolling into this and I didn't get my opportunity to do the recap of our listening session, so I apologize for that. We had, uh, four speakers tonight at our listening session. Mr. Ed Deppi, uh, was a vocal and passionate advocate for electric vehicles. And he asked us to reconsider the purchase of hybrid police vehicles and instead go specifically with electric vehicles. Carl Keel from our Public Works Department came forward, uh, with the, uh, the information that the hybrid police vehicles, they, they fit the, the description that we need for pursuit rated vehicles, that they fit the equipment and the service needs of, of pursuit vehicles. So it, um, we, we acknowledge that we do have a plan in place to ultimately work our way toward a completely electric vehicle fleet within the city of Bloomington, but it's gonna take some time and we're gonna have to work to get there. And it's certainly easier for, um, for passenger cars than it is for pursuit, pursuit, uh, vehicles or for, uh, heavy equipment or that kind of thing. So it's just, it's gonna be a, a work, a work in progress for a number of years for the city. Mr. Steve Clark came forward. He's a longtime election judge. Uh, he's served as a head judge for a number of years. And, uh, he, he brought forward some criticisms of, for the, uh, application to be a, uh, an election judge, the application that needs to be filled out via computer. He thinks it's too confusing for judges. It's, and it's too onerous. Uh, I would agree. It looked, uh, as he showed us the, the two-page application that he filled out in the past as opposed to the, uh, much longer application online that is required now. And, uh, it was explained that the application is required online, um, to try and make the election judges more in line with, uh, our other employees, to get them, uh, into the system a little bit more efficiently to, to collect the information that is necessary. Uh, unfortunately, there's a lot of extemporaneous, uh, information there that, uh, aren't, isn't necessarily, uh, necessarily necessary for an election judge. So, uh, we did talk about possibly streamlining the application project, process in some way. Or, uh, also talked about the fact that, uh, our election judges tend to come back from year to year. And once people put their information in, it is in the system then and it becomes much easier in year two. So kind of pain in the year one, but it will make things much easier in year two and three and, and, and off into infinity. Sally Ness came forward. They had questions about a conditional use permit that was issued, I believe, back in 2012. Uh, she talked about alleged versus actual misrepresentation, uh, of items and information on the conditional use permit. And I believe that's an ongoing conversation that we have had, uh, and continue to have with Ms. Ness about that conditional use permit. And finally, as we've talked about, uh, a bit here tonight, Evelyn Jacobson came forward. Uh, her RV is 43 feet long. Bloomington has a 40-foot limit on, on the storage and loading and unloading of RVs in neighborhoods. And so the discussion that you just heard, uh, among the council members was basically the discussion that was kicked off during the listening session. And we have a, uh, we're, we're gonna be getting a little bit more information moving forward, trying to figure out what we want to do with it from there. Did I miss anything, council? Very good. Is there anything else tonight? If, uh, Councilmember DeLisandro.
I, as a result of the listening session stuff, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to just put, uh, point out, I think, I think if I'm correct, we've had five now, four now? out, I think, I think, if I'm correct, we've had five now? Four now? Four or five sessions?
Four or five, yes.
Yeah. I think there's been only, there have been at least 80% of those have been new people for the first time coming in front of us. Is that right?
I, I would, I don't know the number, the exact number, but I think that's probably.
Yeah, well, I, I just wanna, I wanna, we agreed as a council that we would continuously check in on whether or not the listening session process was, was working for the city and, and things like that. And I don't know what other data points we have other than our own lived experience here, but I think so far, so good, would be my assessment. I'm curious if that's yours as well.
I, I would agree. I think one of the things we, you said, we wanted to open this conversation up to more people, and we wanted to make it a conversation. And I think if people listen in, or if they, they show up and watch, it is certainly a conversation, and it's, it's a lot of new faces, folks we, I've, I've not met before, and folks who have not come forward before. So I think it, it's working the way we envisioned it would Council, hearing no further council business this evening, I would look for a motion to
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Lohman, to adjourn tonight's meeting. Hearing no further council discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thanks much for the discussion this evening. Thanks to staff for your work. Thanks to everybody who is in person here and who tuned in. Thanks much. Have a good rest of your night, good rest of your week.